All right, I call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for May 16, 2018. And we should start with a roll call. Sherry?
Chair Pelosi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Mr. Jagiello.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Merk.
Here.
Thank you. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card. So far, we have a dozen. We could do that, yes, that's fine. Commissioner Merk, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Glad to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I was saying, members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda, and the main item being, of course, the text amendment tonight, are requested to fill out a speaker's card, looks like this, it's out on the table in the foyer, and file it with the secretary to the commission. Cards are available in the lobby. State your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. We have a dozen so far, and if we're going to get out of here at any reasonable hour, we need to limit comments to three minutes or less. You'll see the lights on the lectern. It starts out green, gets yellow, when it turns red, your three minutes are up. Okay, next order of business here. Yes, the next order of business is public communications. The time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business that are not on the agenda. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? All right, seeing no response, we'll declare a close to public communications. We have a consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission may second with the recommendation from staff to approve as submitted. Do we have any comments from the commissioners as to suggested changes? Then I'll invite a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass the minutes.
Okay, a second anywhere?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? And we have a roll call, please.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Pelosi?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item of business, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Since we didn't have any specific sites, we can dispense with that. But I would like to find out about ex parte contacts on the major topic of the evening. And we'll start with you, Chester.
Who would I speak to? I have no idea.
Chair and members, on that subject, there's no need for ex parte disclosures on the second item on the agenda because it is a legislative item. You may disclose, of course, if you wish, but there's no obligation to do so. The obligation to disclose ex parte contacts is triggered when we have an adjudicative item, where you have an applicant or an appellant. This is a legislative item, so that requirement does not apply, although you may disclose, of course.
Okay. Anyone else wish to disclose any contacts?
I don't know.
Oh, Commissioner Powers is gone. All right, we'll assume there were none. Next is the public hearing item, number two. It's entitled Tiny Homes Text Amendment. And I would, I just have, before we get the staff report, I'm curious why it's called Tiny Homes when the paragraph that's proposed for insertion in the code is called movable tiny homes. I'm wondering if, having attached movable to the item, if we might have attracted anyone who's interested in movable tiny homes, but not in tiny homes generally. Just overlooked, I suspect.
Mr. Chair, I suspect it was just overlooked. I noticed also there's probably some back and forth on homes versus houses, which I found myself trying to consistently use houses at this time, though they mean the same thing. The focus tonight is very much on the movable tiny homes that could be located on lots and could then become essentially permanent or moved again subsequently.
Or temporary, yeah.
Right. But that's the focus of tonight's item.
Yes, understand that.
And Chair, just to note for the record, the agenda item does include the full recommendation, which did describe it as movable tiny houses. So I think we've met the obligations.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about what the outcome of tonight's meeting actually is. Is this something we vote on like a normal thing, or are we just making recommendations back to the City Council?
You would be making a recommendation, but I think a vote on it clearly, because you essentially have an ordinance in front of you at this point in time. So I think it's fairly detailed. The protocol was that it had, the ordinance would have to be considered by the Planning Commission, which I believe you saw this item last October, but it was without an ordinance, which is why it's back before you tonight, because the City Council could not have taken action on the ordinance without Planning Commission consideration.
And as I understand it now, there are, I guess, three possible outcomes here. Recommending to the City Council that the draft ordinance be passed by the City Council without change, second that it be passed with change that we may suggest here this evening, or suggest that it not be passed. Would that summarize the three possible outcomes of our discussion?
I would say that summarizes them, yes. You would have those options.
Okay. Then can we have a staff report, please? Thank you.
Yes, certainly may, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm just going to be brief on this. I know this item as a whole has come before you several times, and the City Council as well, to just try to focus the issue of, this ordinance pertains to movable tiny homes. And the way the ordinance is written is, instead of kind of treating them as a standalone housing category, it would be to integrate them into the existing accessory dwelling unit section of the city's code. So you essentially would be adding a subset to that and treating them as a building typology of an accessory dwelling unit. Now, there are some obvious differences. These tend to be smaller than a typical accessory dwelling unit. They would tend to be pre-built. They have more mobility. These tend to be on wheels and can be permanently located, or could not be put on a permanent foundation, but essentially rest at grade, be hooked up to utilities, or even at discretion, not hooked up to utilities and be essentially off the grid, the way the draft ordinance is written. So there are some differences. They would also have to be detached versus a typical accessory dwelling unit could be attached or detached. The size is capped on these at 440 square feet, which also still seems to be fairly large for something mobile, whereas a typical accessory dwelling unit could be almost three times that size, so allowed up to 1,200 square feet. So I think knowing there are these factors where these things are clearly somewhat different than a stick-built accessory dwelling unit, if located and functioning like a typical second or accessory dwelling unit, they can be integrated into that section of the code, I believe, rather than just treating it as something entirely different. But I think that's really the focus tonight, is unlike when you had seen this before without an ordinance, there were probably more issues at play. But I think fundamentally, you still have, is this seen as a viable type of accessory dwelling unit for the city of Ojai? Because all of the existing accessory dwelling unit provisions, for instance, one per residential lot, those are all still at play. So they would be subject to those provisions of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance as well. So issues of like having 10 per single-family lot, that's not something that's on the table here. So I think as we look at this, you're really seeing these as, and this ordinance, as something augmenting your existing accessory dwelling ordinance. So that's really my report. I know there's a lot of interest on this, and there are issues to weigh. One thing that may have come up before this body before, and it did come up at the City Council meeting in March, is it just recently had gotten a response from Ventura County on the assessor and how they would view these. And the answer largely hinges on is whether the structure is viewed as permanent or not. So say you were to locate one of these units on a property, put it on a foundation, it's essentially deemed as a permanent fixture at that point in time.
It becomes real estate, you mean?
Yes, correct. It would be viewed as a-
Real estate with a license plate on it?
Well, you're essentially treating it then like you would a stick-built structure. It's sitting on a foundation, it's connected to utilities, although there would be a greater ability to move it in the future, it is at that point seen as a permanent structure and would be subject to reassessment. Versus if it were not put on a foundation, it's essentially viewed as a trailer in somebody's yard that people are living in. So from an assessor's standpoint, that difference could remain. Doesn't really affect how we look at it from a land use or regulatory standpoint, but I know that question had come up before, so I just wanted to get that on the record. And for now, that concludes staff's report. I'm sure there will be quite a few questions of us tonight, and a lot of people eager to speak.
I have several of my own, but I'll turn to my fellow commissioners first.
I have quite, I have quite a few questions regarding the administrative report, mostly for my own education. In terms of RENA targets, when do those need to be met?
We are going to be talking to SCAG in the coming month, and I believe the date we're looking at to try to get the new RENA numbers is going to be around October of this year. So it's already being worked on. I don't have a definitive answer as to how, if these were considered and approved, how they would be viewed from regional agencies. But yeah, we're essentially working on that number as of now.
If I could add one point to that, Chair and members. The additional point to bear in mind with RENA numbers is that, in addition to being tested every eight years with the redoing of our housing element as required by the state code, the state is now testing our RENA numbers annually with our annual housing element production reports, where we provide a report to HCD of how many units have been approved or built, or both. And the state, in the most recent round of affordable housing legislation, has been looking at taking those numbers on an annual basis and adding some teeth behind that. So it's not just an eight-year exercise now. Thank you.
Something that you mentioned just before the meeting started was that we're counting building permits as well as zoning clearances?
Yes, in other words, the annual housing element production report speaks to how many housing units have been approved in that year.
Which would be either of those categories.
Correct. And I will defer to the director on if something is approved in one year and built in the other year, which year it gets counted in. We don't get to double count.
Okay, go ahead, Ray.
Thank you. On page two of three of the administrative report, there's a sentence here, "further subject to architectural and design compatibility with the character of the neighborhood in which they're proposed to be located." Wherever that was referenced, it seemed ambiguous to me what design compatibility with the character of any specific neighborhood is.
And I think the intent of the language, there's different phrases used in the ordinance itself, is we're essentially looking for something that looks more like a residential dwelling. So I think that's more the focus, is does it look like a house rather than compatible with the exact neighborhood it's in? I think that where it's going towards is something where you're looking at more of a traditional type of trailer and trying to have these integrate. So this is not something that's proposed to say, go through a design review permit to the Planning Commission, but there would be some, you know, brief exercise of discretion in terms of what's proposed, because some of these look very much like homes and others could not. And I think that's really the goal of that language. It's not to create a hearing process, though.
Okay. On that same page, a couple sentences later, it says, "limits the number of tiny houses to one unit per legal lot." I have a concern of the ordinance being that specific, because we've been starting conversations of cluster housing, tiny home villages, people who own acre lots, two-acre lots, you know, larger lots who may want to offer more units for affordable housing other than one. And so I have, I just want to, you know, put on record that I have a concern that if we say that, that there's the ability to amend it at a later date if overlays are then allowed and permitted.
Well, I think the answer there is you can always amend an ordinance. But the focus again is like, these are going into really single-family zoned lots here, where under the existing ADU provisions, you could have a house, you can have an ADU. You can't have two ADUs. So something like a tiny home village cluster housing where you could have, I don't know how many per lot, depending on the acreage, I think that's really a question of zoning. Because now you're really talking about a multifamily per lot situation, unlike a single-family zone situation.
And would that amendment go on to this ordinance, or it's a whole separate thing? I'm just trying to understand where that conversation would come in.
You might be able to do either, but as a planner, I think if you're talking about something that's now multifamily housing, it would probably belong somewhere else, because I think you're talking about creating a new zoning district at that point in time.
Or perhaps rezoning existing properties to the multifamily zones that exist on the code. Certainly doable, but perhaps a separate conversation.
Noting that any zoning change is not in the purview of the Planning Commission, but simply a recommendation to the City Council.
Correct. You would be reviewing any zoning change, and the council would be needed to approve it. It's a legislative act.
And classifying movable tiny homes as ADUs leaves you subject to all the other ADU regulations, which, as you mentioned, is one per lot.
That is correct. This ordinance is integrating into that existing section of the code.
On page two of seven of Attachment A, is it, can we go into the ordinance now? Because I believe that's the ordinance. I'm just confused. I admit my own ignorance. The last sentence, "the proposed changes to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance allowing and adopting standards for movable tiny houses as a new type of accessory dwelling unit as authorized by state law has no potential for resulting in physical changes in the environment because it consists of changes in the standards governing issuance of ministerial permits for accessory dwelling units and does not directly or indirectly approve any applications for particular accessory dwelling units." That sentence just spun my head. I don't know what that means.
Excuse me, what document are you referring to again?
I'm on Attachment A, page two of seven on the bottom.
At the very bottom.
I'm at there, too.
It's the second half of that bottom paragraph.
You have to look at the one that-
Oh, it starts at the proposed change.
Yes, the proposed change is right.
It is a long sentence. What I think I can give kind of the Reader's Digest version is that by making a recommendation on this ordinance tonight, it's not going to result in anything being built in the environment that could have a negative environmental impact. So you're not entitling any construction tonight.
Even, even, even City Council approval of this text amendment doesn't approve any construction.
Correct. It would essentially, and you're not giving an individual property even a right to build a structure, they couldn't. You're giving them an ability to put a type of structure that currently the code doesn't address.
On page three of seven, subsection one, movable tiny houses, I was trying to find subsection D1C, where it says, "the prohibition of subsection D1C of this section shall not apply to movable tiny houses." I couldn't find it. That doesn't mean it wasn't there, but I couldn't find it.
This, this section is 10-21709. This L is a subsection, so it's-
DLC, right, and I couldn't find that. Doesn't, like I said, it may be there, but I couldn't find it, you know?
It's in the, it's in the zoning that already exists. It's not in the ordinance that's proposed tonight, so it's referring to-
I got it, and it's not in that chart.
It's just after the chart. So if you're familiar with section 10-21709-
D1C.
Or in English, the new ADU ordinance that the council adopted recently, that ordinance is what this is inserted into. And so that's why it references to, that's why when you look in this ordinance, you're not finding subsection D1C and D1D. They're already in section 10-21709.
Okay.
And I'm, we can get you a copy if you don't have one handy.
Okay, thank you.
Well, for the edification of those here and those at home who do not have a copy of 10-21709 at hand, 1709D says, "the following development standards shall apply to accessory dwelling units with the standards set separately for each accessory dwelling unit type." Then there's the table, which you may remember we went through at great, at great length in prior meetings. And then one is standards in common, and one C is mobile homes, except those fitting the definition of section 18007 of the Health and Safety Code. And travel trailers shall not be permitted as second units. So mobile homes and travel trailers, except those fitting the definition of section 18007 of the Health and Safety Code, that's state law, are not permitted. And I confess, I read 18007, and I could make no sense of it. So I think we're all in various states of ignorance here as to what all this means.
Thanks for that clarification, though.
At least, at least you know what's written down in the code.
On, I'm going to continue here. On page three of seven, subsection one, number two, it says, "a movable tiny house is a residential dwelling unit that is accessory to a principal residential dwelling unit located on the same parcel of land." So what came to my mind as an example was, what if someone purchases a piece of land, they want the primary residence to be a tiny home, and then they want to offer another tiny home, like there's, as an affordable dwelling unit, as an ADU? Would that be allowed?
I think so long as you have two units that are recognized as living units, one's going to be viewed as the principal, and one's going to be viewed as an accessory dwelling unit. I think even in our last meeting, we had that home with an integrated accessory dwelling unit, and the owner said they had planned on, if not immediately, ultimately, living in the smaller unit.
Yes.
So in a sense, there's two units, one would be viewed as the principal, one would be viewed as accessory.
So in that case, if they, when they took down that home, if they wanted to bring in two tiny homes and skirt them both, that would be allowed under this ordinance?
I don't see anything that would prohibit that, because they would be viewed as two homes, and you would essentially be viewing one as a primary, even if they were the same size. You know, you're going to be looking at one as a primary dwelling, one as a secondary dwelling. You're still going to be looking at the development standards on the site and seeing if it would be allowable.
Are the development standards the same for a primary unit as they are for an ADU?
They are different, but it would have to, the primary unit, if you could have something that fits the category of a tiny home, that would meet the primary dwelling standards, which offhand, I don't have all that right now, but generally, you have maximums, like maximum height or minimum setbacks. If you could have a tiny home, or like a prefabricated home even, that would fit within those development standards and be used as a primary residence, that would be allowable now, as long as it meets those development standards.
Right, but the ADU would be 50% of that, remember that?
Right.
Right, so they can't have two of the same size.
Which would greatly compromise, you're right.
Sure, sure.
That one's, one would always have to be subordinate.
Oh, so if one of the tiny homes is 140 square feet, the other one can only be 70?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But the crux of my question, and I'm sorry to interrupt, Ray.
No, no, that's a-
The crux of my question is, if you have a primary residential unit-
Right.
-on the property, does it have to be permitted under the California Business Building Standards Code? Or can the primary unit on the property, whether it's on its wheels or on a foundation, can that, can a primary unit be built to ANSI standards rather than the California Building Standards Code?
I don't know if that issue has ever come up. I know a prefabricated home constructed off-site could be used as a primary residence. Now, whether a prefabricated home could be considered under ANSI standards, I would say typically, if, that's not going to be the case, it would be viewed from a building code standpoint, because it's going to be on a foundation. I'm certainly not an expert on the, the ANSI standards, though, but, you know, we are getting into, it's, the idea that a tiny home would be a primary residence, I suppose it could happen, you'd have to look at the regulations, but I think, as you say, if we're looking at something that's very small by nature, and the secondary unit would have to be half that size at a maximum, I don't know how-
You'd have to go outside to turn around.
It would be a really small, the second unit would be a very small second unit at that point.
Yes, yes.
Chair, if I could add, and Commissioners, if I could add a point on that one. As presently drafted, the draft before you blocks the second, the, blocks the primary, rather, from being a ANSI standard. It requires that the ANSI standard tiny house, movable tiny house, be the accessory to a principal dwelling unit. Now, as, as the Community Development Director noted, that principal dwelling unit could be stick-built to the building code, or it could be prefab-built to the building code. Whether to allow the primary and the secondary to be built to ANSI standards is a question available to you now, to recommend to the council.
And the ordinance as drafted is silent on the matter, it appears? Or, or are you saying that it really prohibits-
It prohibits it effectively.
-two ANSI standard structures on the same property?
As presently drafted, it prohibits two ANSI standard dwelling units, because it provides, on the bottom of page three, is, before the def, the six-part definition, "A movable tiny house is a residential dwelling unit that is accessory to a principal dwelling unit." And there's no allowance in the code for a principal dwelling unit to be built to the ANSI standard. That said, this is a draft, you can change that in your recommendation to the council.
I have a comment, can I make a comment now on-
Oh, please.
Because it's on the ANSI code and it has to do on page five, attachment A, page five of seven. And again, it's the mixing of the different code requirements. When you're, when you're quoting, you know, California Building Code with an ANSI code, there's a inherent conflict there, and it really shouldn't be there, because it's going to cause problems, because tiny homes are just not built to that standard. So, if you're referencing a standard that tiny homes are not built to, you're going to, it's not going to work. So, that, that doesn't make any sense that you've quoted a California Building Code there when we're dealing strictly with the ANSI code.
Where, where, where are you, Chester, on page five?
A, emergency and rescue openings.
Okay, thank you.
All movable tiny homes meet the requirement of section R 310 of the California Building Code. And again, if we're talking ANSI code, it should not even be there. That should not be in here.
Or maybe it's an overlay on ANSI.
No, you can't, you cannot do, there are two different codes.
It can be modified, the city can cite two codes in one ordinance, that is, within the city's power. The question is whether to do so or not. One option is to use this, another option is to assess what the strict requirement should be, or the requirement should be, and then cite that directly, rather than, rather than quote the building code. Both are op, both options are viable.
Okay. Commissioner Powers still has the floor, but a brief comment.
Right, oh, that's okay. Well, actually, just kind of adding onto what Chester was saying, so the ANSI code does actually cover, in the new tiny house amendment, the issue about lofts, and it also covers the issue about alternative exits. So, basically, the ANSI code covers it, and once again, there's no need to, to mix the bill, California Building Code with the ANSI Code, because they're two, two different standards.
So, I think the clarification should be that if, if you were using the building code standard throughout, that's what you'd use, if you're using the ANSI standard throughout, this subsection K should probably recognize that if built to the ANSI standard, what it would need to comply to.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
The floor is yours again.
I appreciate your generosity. Page four, seven, it's 2G, "Is designed and built to look like a conventional building structure using conventional building materials." So, that feels ambiguous to me, what constitutes a conventional building structure, given they're all custom-built homes, and what constitutes, and more so, what constitutes conventional building materials? I mean, is there a list of those? I mean, there's more than just wood, there's concrete siding, there's all sorts of things. So, I don't know what a conventional building material is, maybe Chester knows more about that, maybe Luke, you can field that.
No, it's, it's a good question, I think it goes back to your earlier point, and this language can certainly be modified. I, I think this is trying to address the concern for people having something that clearly doesn't fit in the neighborhood and looks really prefabricated, but you're, what's a conventional building material? I don't know, could that include metal? Some areas, people do, you know? We, we just recently had a home approved in the last year here with a corrugated corten steel exterior. Can't see the house from the street, but certainly masonry, wood, stucco, there's all sorts of things. I think where this is going, while it is vague, is it's trying to make sure that if these ended up being approved, that they're integrating into neighborhoods and looking more like a conventional second unit.
Yeah.
But, but the, the language is, is, I think intentionally that way, for the same reason homes can look different and use different materials.
The, the-
I just wanted to say that I, I agree with you about the vagueness of that, especially in lieu of the fact that we do not have a design review board. It's like, how do you decide if it's appropriate or not?
I wanted to ask just a question before we leave the topic of conventional building materials, since these units are, to my understanding, and perhaps I'm wrong, they are deliberately built on metal frames to which axles and wheels can or cannot be attached. Do you consider a metal frame foundation to be conventional building materials? Because it seems to me that a lot of this is going to fall to the director and the city building official to decide against what, what is increasingly appearing to be at least somewhat vague language, and so I'm curious about your thought on that particular item.
Well, though, I think you're touching on one of the clear differences, these things are movable, they can be towed to a site, which a stick-built structure would not be. So, there's a recognition, there's a chassis, but there's also the option of making these look more like a conventional small structure, and they're on a foundation.
Yeah, my, my question was a bit more focused, do you consider that metal chassis to be conventional building materials?
I would, and just the lay meaning of conventional, no. I think when you're saying conventional building materials, you're probably looking at things like stick-built construction.
Looking at type 24.
Yeah, I, I think that's what you typically mean, and a lot of these provisions that, like Commissioner Powers is asking, this is vague, vague language, but I think it's an attempt to take this building type and integrate it in conventionally, to kind of put concerns aside about people who might think, I don't necessarily want a trailer in a yard next to me, I want something that looks like a home. And that's, sorry, I think we're going with this, but it can certainly be modified.
You're not done, are you?
That's where-
Okay, well, let's, let's-
I can take a pause and allow others to-
Please, go ahead, Kathy.
So, if you read the rest of the sentence on G, it's, you know, or I'll read the whole sentence over again, it says, "Is designed and built to look like a conventional building structure using conventional building materials and is thus architecturally distinct from traditional mobile homes and recreational vehicles."
Mm-hmm.
Like, to me, I, that language isn't, I mean, I know it's not super specific, but it does delineate between the look of a traditional mobile home and a recreational vehicle, in other words, you're using other materials so that this, essentially, we're talking about the siding and the roof. It's what you visually see on the exterior.
And just, yeah, one other similar provision is that if the wheels were to remain on, they would have to be hidden, you would have a skirting around the base of the structure. So, a lot of this language is an attempt to really make these integrate like a more conventional structure.
Chester?
Yes, and it's kind of reiterated in section four at A, where it says, "Design. The director shall review the design of each proposed movable tiny house to ensure that the structure is designed to look like a conventional building structure and is architecturally distinct from traditional mobile homes and recreational vehicles." It repeats that same theme-
Yes.
-twice, which I, which I do believe is, clarifies the meaning and the purpose of where this is going.
So, that brings up my next point and question is, is a conventional building-
Page reference?
Oh, well, it's 4A, page four of seven, of what Chester was just speaking of, "Designed to look like a conventional building structure." So, does that, so my creative mind, seeing something on a chassis, goes, okay, does that mean only a rectilinear building be built? Or if I wanted to build a green dragon with, with shingles, wood shingles, with a, a tail and a head that's the loft, and wheel it in and live in it as my tiny home, am I going to be allowed?
That'll be an interesting application when that comes in. Yeah, yeah, I, I think the whole, the rectilinear portion about something having regular geometry, I think that's less of an issue, but again, we're, we are trying to, I don't know that there's a definitive answer, there never is on design review with what's a house and what isn't. Does, you know, does Frank Gehry's architecture integrate into a neighborhood? Probably not, but a lot of people revere it. I think where we're going, and again, this can be modified if there's concerns about design, wanting to make it more restrictive or less restrictive. The green dragon idea, I'm not so sure about, I don't think that that's the type of thing that we'd have in mind, but without seeing building elevations, I don't know.
Well, you know, I, I threw an idea out there that, that was unconventional, because it's such a small footprint, you know, these trailers are small, so when you look at the scale, you have a lot more freedom to play with design. It's, I just wanted to speak on that, and that was in note.
I think it would depend on the neighborhood you're in, right?
Yes.
Surrounded by green dragon homes?
Yeah, surrounded by dream, green dragon homes and dragon eggs, yes. On 4E, "Could you define what an all-weather surface pedestrian path from the street front edge to the main entrance of the movable tiny house shall be provided?" So, that means no mulch, no soil, nor lawn, or lawn as a pedestrian footpath? I'm, wasn't clear what that meant.
I don't know that that's been clearly defined, you can certainly walk on a lawn, you could have pavers, you could probably have decomposed granite, some type of paving, some type of masonry work, I think there'd be a lot of different things that fit into that.
Well, what about the reverse question, though? What would not be an all-weather surface pedestrian path, that you just can't get to the unit?
It would be a factor, but dirt-
Mud, dirt, grass, it's usually a solid surface.
If you take dirt and then the weather changes, you get mud.
Or compacted surface.
Okay, I think it's talking about, you, you would have an option, but for something that has to be a year-round accessible pedestrian path, is what I think we're going to.
Okay. Next page, five of seven, on F, "Mechanical equipment, all mechanical equipment for movable tiny house shall be incorporated into the structure and shall not be located on the roof." Because I'm not a tiny home designer, I didn't know what mechanical equipment is involved that can't be on the roof. Can you give an example?
An air, an air conditioner?
Oh, I got it, so that's it, okay. Got it. The word mechanical is throwing me, I'm a gearhead, so I was thinking mechanical, okay. Maybe off-grid, number G, "May be off-grid and not connected to one or more utility systems, but only if the applicant provides sufficient proof to the satisfaction of the director and the building official that the movable tiny house has adequate safe and sanitary utility systems providing water, sewer, heat, cooling, and electric power." So, that brings up the subject, and I, I know Chair Quillisi has looked into this, and the state doesn't have a ruling on compost toilets, but it says it's may be off-grid, and it talks about sanitary utility systems. So, I just want to mention that, because it's, it's mentioned in that paragraph, "Safe and sanitary utility systems such as water, sewer, and heat." So, that, you know, that covers solar and things like that, but in terms of being off the grid from the sewer system, compost toilets is a conversation to be had there, possibly as an amendment.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, you're just trying not to preclude the option for living off the grid, which is, you know, and you have the language in there that, you'd essentially have to demonstrate that what you're proposing is workable.
I'm complete, thank you for giving me so much time, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Mert, do you have questions? Okay. Commissioner Nolan, you have questions of staff?
No.
You're okay, okay, well, I have a few. Since, I, I'm going back to attachment A, page three of seven, paragraphs 2A and 2B, 2A or 2B, you have said you're, you're not clear on the specific differences between the ANSI standards and the California Building Standards Code, and I understand, but I am concerned about public safety. I am thinking about things like the Thomas Fire and 60-plus mile an hour winds, and I don't know if an ANSI standard-built living unit is as safe in that environmental condition as a California Building Standards-built unit. And I'm having trouble deciding whether this is a good thing without knowing that. So, I don't, I don't know how we get around that, I remember you mentioned it in, in earlier conversation that we had, that, that the standard, the ANSI standards are available at some cost, and it's not clear whether that's something the city should be investing in.
We, I believe, have copies of those sections, there is a cost to them, they're fairly lengthy documents, but-
Right.
In terms of, you know, comparing a structure that's reviewed under ANSI standards versus the building code, that's not my expertise to know in terms of safety, it's definitely a fair question for a living unit.
Would, would the city building official be able to enlighten us further on that, or would there be someone else, you think, on city staff, or, or perhaps the city attorney, I'm not sure, that could enlighten the commission on, on those differences and whether they are material in the kinds of environments that we may find ourselves in?
Yeah, I don't want to answer for the building official, I can certainly, the building code's going to be one thing, I think ANSI standards is another, I'm not sure how often people have the opportunity to review structures that are subject to them.
Frequently at best, I'm sure.
Right, so it's, it's not as typical, and again, they're going to be standards that are striving for the same goal, to have safe living units, but you're compared, they're different standards, and obviously, the nature of the units are generally different, too. We could certainly see if we could get somebody who can kind of compare those things, even with the dissimilarities, but I know with kind of these pre-built units, that's essentially why you would have this alternative standard, because these things are not constructed like a conventional unit on site, which is where the ANSI standards come into play.
And to add to that, certainly, if this item moves forward to the council, the city staff will get deeply familiar with the ANSI standards, to be able to evaluate applications as they come forward.
I-
As we sit here right now, we don't have the information.
My concern right now, yes.
But certainly, we wouldn't move forward, if the commission recommends to the council, and the council adopts it, it wouldn't be implemented without developing that expertise.
Kathy?
I did have in my notes a comment about fire safe requirements, and I was going to save it for later, but now that we're talking about it, and this was a suggestion that in very high and high fire zones per Cal Fire, you know, decking materials and roofs, of course, have to be Class A, but potentially, it may be something we want to consider, that if a tiny home is going to be, or for that matter, any ADU, that they have to have the Class A roof, it could be Class A cladding, meaning whatever type of wood application is on the exterior.
Exterior surfaces other than windows, yes.
Exactly, and including, if there had to be a skirting around the deck, if that was wood, it could be Class A also, and the same thing with a deck, and then, of course, you'd have to look at, you know, because you don't want embers going under a deck, same thing under, if there's any sort of an eve, you want to make sure you have all the screening and what have you.
Right.
So, if it's something I, we may want to include in this as a consideration, but once again, I think that would be for all ADUs, in addition to if we decided to-
Regular stick-built ADUs have to, have to meet those standards.
Right.
They don't need to meet the high-fire standards in the City of Ojai at all. City of Ojai is not high-fire.
The City of Ojai has not yet mandated Class A roofs, for example.
Well, that's true, but it's not high-fire, she's-
Although the BAB has recommended that.
Yeah, exactly, we're, we're not in a high-fire zone, so we're not classified as high-fire, so those, those, those types of products aren't necessary.
So, the only-
In an existing structure in the City of Ojai, at this point.
Right.
So, to rec, to recommend them for a tiny home seems unfair.
The reason I brought it up was, we are, we're actually, I know that the new Cal Fire map came out, and I do know that the BABS is reviewing and possibly updating, it's not complete yet.
If I could offer a point on that one-
Well, Class A roofs, yeah, Class A roofs are okay, you know, that's fine, that's pretty typical.
Yes, please.
Chair members, thank you, a brief point on the fire maps, for the members of the public who may not be deeply involved in those issues, as noted, the Cal Fire, together with the Ventura County Fire Protection District and the city, are working on developing new fire maps. The process requires the state issues a map, the county tweaks it, then it goes to the city, the city can accept it or expand it at will. The Building Appeals Board is making recommendations to the city council, the city council will be considering those at some point this year, I don't know the exact date, but certainly relatively soon, and it will be up to the city council to decide the extent of the city's fire hazard zone classification beyond the minimums set by the state, the past state minimum, provided that portions, but not all of the city are in a state-designated very high fire hazard severity zone. It will be up to the council to decide whether and how to classify the rest of the city. Thank you.
And, and if, and if a Class A roof, for example, becomes a part of the code for new construction, does that apply to a new tiny home on wheels pulled onto an existing parcel? Is that new construction, or is that just, it's a trailer?
I would think if it's subject to the building code, it's going to be new construction. What I would, what I would recommend, I think, on this, is if the fire safety standards for, say, exterior material, it sounds like what you want to ensure is whether it would be an ANSI standard or a building code standard, that it would not be less than what the city would require under the building code. So, if the codes were to essentially be upgraded where it was Class A at some future point, to have this also be of an equal standard, is that, that's what it sounds like?
That's what I'm aiming at, is, is the public safety aspect of it, and I don't know what the ANSI standard is, so I can't tell if that's equivalent to a Class A roof and exterior cladding, for example, I just don't know.
I, I don't either, but it's, it's sounding to me like the concern is that you would want assurance that it would meet, it would be of equal standard-
Yes, yes.
-to what a, the, the primary unit would be.
Yeah, if we're talking about public safety, I think then we need to err on the side of, of caution.
Right, because I, I would just suggest that would be in the recommendation.
Yeah, my point was that we, we don't have that standard now.
We don't have that today.
So, we don't want to, we don't want to put that standard on the tiny homes at this time, and once that's changes in the City of Ojai, I think it will change across the board for all structures, for our new construction.
Okay, so if that does change, then we should try to ensure that the city council ensures that language of that sort also applies here, and that's probably additional language to whatever the BAB might have recommended in specifics.
One approach for that would be to simply add a provision in the definitions here that movable tiny houses must meet the currently applicable fire protection standards imposed by the city for new construction. Thus, whatever those standards are, they apply to a tiny house at the time the tiny house is approved, it would be a matter of-
The same public safety-
The same rules set by the council for other buildings.
Regulations as any other residential dwelling unit.
Right, that would be one approach to accomplish this goal. One question to consider in evaluating that is whether those standards can be met for a typical movable tiny house, and perhaps the commentators this evening will speak to that.
Okay, my, my concern was not whether it's easy to meet them or not, but that those standards, in my opinion, should exist. On attachment A, page four of seven, paragraph four, the first line, "Movable tiny homes, houses must meet the standards of this subsection," that's 10-21709L, "and the applicable requirements in table A," in- and the applicable requirements in Table A in subsection D. Now, since we are talking about detached accessory dwelling units, I take that to be the leftmost column in Table A called new detached accessory dwelling unit. Are all of the standards in that column then applicable to tiny homes on wheels? And are there any others? In other words, what are the applicable requirements of Table A?
Well, certainly, the majority of them. I can look down at the bottom on maximum floor area. Again, where it says 1,200 square feet or 50%, the tiny homes would be subject to 440 square feet. So, they would not be anywhere near as large as the maximum for an accessory dwelling unit. The other things, like zones they're permitted in, setbacks, coverage, building height, all of those would be the same as for an accessory dwelling unit. Though I think for a tiny home, they're going to have a harder time reaching, say, the scale of something that could be 1,200 square feet, since they can only be 440.
Okay, and you mentioned permitted zones. C1 is the commercial zone that's primarily along the two sides of Ojai Avenue? So, under this ordinance, it would be permitted to put a tiny home on wheels on a parcel abutting Ojai Avenue?
Currently, accessory dwellings are allowed in those zones if there's already a primary residence. So, you have.
Already a primary residence.
Correct, so you have essentially non-conforming residences in those zones. And you generally cannot expand a non-conforming use. However, the existing accessory dwelling unit ordinance allows you to build an accessory dwelling unit if you're in, say, a C1 commercial zone. But you have to already have the house.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, right, a commercial use could not build an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, same page, paragraph four B, it mentions. Is a deed restriction per Table A an applicable requirement when there's an ADU that turns out to be a tiny home on wheels?
Yes, I believe in, yeah, the existing ordinance, there is a deed restriction requirement for all accessory dwelling units.
So, that is an applicable requirement, that if you pull a tiny home on wheels into your backyard on an approved base, whether it's concrete or DG or something, then there will be a deed restriction placed on the property?
I thought we lifted that for these.
That's in that first column. It's on the second page of the table.
Correct, and I know that's subsection J of the existing accessory dwelling ordinance. Yeah, I think what we have before you, and I will defer to the city attorney if there's something in there I missed. I don't think there's any language in the ordinance, the draft ordinance, before you modifying that. So, again, this is fitting in unless there's something clearly accepting it, like, say, the 440 square feet versus 1,200 square feet. Anything that's already in the ordinance, if we're treating these accessory as accessory dwelling units, they would be subject to the same provisions all accessory dwelling units are subject to.
Okay, and so, if I bring a tiny home on wheels into my side yard, for example, then I have to get a deed restriction on my parcel. If I then subsequently remove it, is the deed restriction removed? And couldn't we go through an annual cycle here of adding and then removing deed restrictions as the tiny homes on wheels come and go in my property? It sounds to me like that's the case.
Well, yes, if you no longer had the unit, the deed restriction wouldn't really be functioning much anymore. And there's also the provision in here in terms of not more than one application per lot, per year, to kind of discourage, should anybody want to do that. You can't have more than one unit, but you also can't have multiple applications coming in and having these move in and out.
You have to separately apply for each tiny home on wheels that you wish to have appear on your parcel?
Correct, and there would have to be a minimum of a one-year gap between applications.
Okay.
And if you remove movable tiny house off the property, you could apply with the city to lift the deed restriction, proving that you removed it. And it's worth noting that, although we had at one point discussed it, the draft ordinance before you now does not exempt movable tiny houses from the deed restriction requirement. And for those not familiar with it, that requirement is that one of the two units on the property, the primary or the ADU, be owner occupied, with some exceptions. It, of course, is up to the commission or council if they wish to lift that for these houses.
Okay. Okay, going on, this is still Attachment A, page five of seven, paragraph four G. It says movable tiny houses shall not have separate utility meters from the primary unit. I'm curious why that is. With a regular ADU, I'm sorry, with any other type of ADU that's currently mentioned in the code, it is at the parcel owner's discretion, I think, whether the ADU is commonly or separately metered? Is that?
Yes.
Attorney, is that correct? And why would it be different for tiny homes on wheels?
The goal with this language was to further facilitate ADUs. As I think most are familiar with, there have been some issues in the past with some of the utility providers in the community over exerting their power. In order to avoid that, this was worded to provide a streamlined path for movable tiny houses by simply expecting them to connect to the existing utilities. Certainly, the commission.
This requires them to do that?
Exactly, which is designed to streamline approval relative to those other agencies. However, of course, it's a draft.
Okay. And to get back to, in part, what Commissioner Powers was talking about, the end of paragraph G there talks about providing sufficient proof to the satisfaction of the director, Mr. Connolly, and the city building official, that the movable tiny house has adequate, safe, and sanitary utility systems. Now, and because this is fairly, to my way of thinking, fairly vague language, I'd like to explore just a bit with you what that means to you. For example, providing water, is an exterior faucet on the primary unit and a long hose? Does that meet the criteria of adequate, safe, and sanitary provision of water?
No, that would not. I think we're going to be looking at the standards, and I would certainly be conferring with the building official.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm trying to understand how this would work if it goes into effect.
And I realize language like this, as with design-oriented language, it is open-ended to a large degree. Again, the goal here, and I would feel free if there's recommendations to tighten this language up more so, then I would say we make those recommendations. But, you know, the goal is to look at a standard that's going to be as close as possible to how we treat existing accessory dwelling units, in terms of things subject to the building codes and other codes like that. But there's always that recognition that a lot of these are somewhat different units. We're trying, we are, to a degree, trying to take something and make it fit into an existing framework that isn't a perfect fit.
Agreed, and my goal here is to make sure that if we go about this, that we are taking due consideration of public health and safety and those things, whether it's with this set of standards or that set of standards. If we achieve the same goal, then that seems like the right thing to me to do. By the same extension of logic, then, an electrical extension cord through a window in the primary unit that goes out to the tiny home on wheels, I presume then would not meet your standard of adequate, safe, and sanitary?
No, it would not.
Okay, okay. And finally, since we've already had the topic of composting toilets brought up, as I recall, the tiny home on wheels that was demonstrated in the lot across the street from City Hall here, I don't think you were here yet, but many in the audience were, that had a composting toilet. And I have not done an exhaustive search on this. As Commissioner Powers mentioned, the state law, so far as I can determine, is silent on that. It defines compost, it defines toilets, but it doesn't define composting toilets. On the other hand, I have been through the Ventura County Resource Management Agency Environmental Health Division. And my understanding at this point is that you have to request permission for a composting toilet. And you have to request that permission from the Environmental Health Division. And they, in turn, have to request permission on your behalf from the Regional Water Quality Control Agency. I think that's the name. It's RWQCA, anyway. Regional Water Quality Control.
Board.
Board.
RW.
It's called an.
Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
And so, my question would be, if a tiny home on wheels with a composting toilet were proposed on some parcel here in the city, is that the process one has to go through to get that aspect of the tiny home on wheels approved?
I think we would be working with the county health agencies and the regional agencies that would be signing off on that. We didn't specifically call them out. We didn't even call out composting toilets in the paragraph.
Of course.
I think the intent of the paragraph, again, I think, is that part of the interest in these types of homes, too, is an environmental one. That probably is going to, and I say probably, attract more people who would be interested in living off the grid than a conventional unit. So, I think this language, which, again, can be considered fairly vague, is allowing you that option and not just sort of shutting the door with you must connect to the conventional utilities. I would suspect most people would, but if somebody has a desire to not go that route, we would have to consider that application and look at it and make sure it's adequately served by other means.
Okay, and that would include going through the Environmental Health Division and the Regional Water Quality Control Board?
I think in the case you're talking about with composting toilets, yes.
Or incinerating toilets, I would take that probably.
Or whatever comes in the next five to 10 years.
Okay.
And depending as things develop, it may be the case that those other agencies' ability to permit, or rather, require permits for composting toilets is preempted by other state law. One of the things that would be considered as this matter moves forward. If required, residents would have to get those permits. If not required, they'd be exempt.
So far, not required, as far as I can tell, but I, as I say, haven't made an exhaustive search. Same page, five of seven, paragraph four J, prohibition on excessive movement. And I'm curious here, not as to the standards, it seems to me the standards are quite clear. No parcel may be approved for more than one movable tiny house in a 12-month period. And no more than one movable tiny house at a time. How does the city plan to enforce that requirement? I mean, to a lot of people, I suspect tiny houses, one or another, look a lot alike. Are we depending on neighborhood complaints about excessive movement of trailers in and out of a backyard? Or is there, along with the permitting process, is there a process of periodic inspection to verify that the tiny home on wheels that is on the property now is the same one that was, in fact, permitted within the last 12 months? Or is there some other protocol that I haven't thought of?
Enforce, go ahead.
No, I think we would be relying on our tracking as well for permits, that when these come in, that you're going to have to keep a log and track the dates, the addresses, and know what you have permitted. I think, like anything, if something were to be done without going through the city or without permits, you know, that's an issue with any type of construction. It could be an issue with tree removal, where very often on things like that, you are having to rely on complaints, you know, so. But I think the city would have to do a good job of also setting up a system to track this, particularly as we get more and more. It's also hard to gauge how many of these will actually get. I know there's a lot of interest and a lot of talk in the community, but I think it's really hard to know how many applications are you going to actually receive for tiny homes? Because you're going to have situations of people who could maybe purchase the unit but don't have the land. And you have people who already live here, who, if they have been interested in getting a second unit, have already constructed one. So, they're precluded from putting a tiny home on their lot. So, it's good to run through all the issues, but it's hard to know. In terms of tracking it, though, the city would have to do a good job, especially where we're tying it to a period of time of what we've issued for what lot and being able to know.
And is it or something else, in fact, there?
True.
Yeah, okay, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Director.
No, they're good questions.
It's a matter of trying to understand how this whole thing's going to work if it goes through. Let me see, 4K, the same page, page five of seven, paragraph 4K, emergency and rescue openings. Commissioner Jagiello mentioned Section R310. I went looking for it. I could not find Section R310. Perhaps you could just give us the 25-word explanation of what that requirement means? Meet the requirements of Section R310 of the California Building Code.
I've not read section.
State the requirement without citing the building code, that's okay, too. I just don't understand what the requirement is.
I believe this is just going for where you would have a bedroom that roof access, if that were really the only access out, would be an option. And it's laying out, again, what the bottom of the opening would need to be for a person to be able to access that opening if they had to get out in an emergency.
So, if I'm sleeping in the loft of a tiny home on wheels, then I'm going to jump to the first floor and then have the opportunity to get out through an opening that's no more than 44 inches above the floor?
Or in some cases, these lofts, the sleeping lofts, have a skylight above them that has a minimum amount of opening width. And then you hop out that and then go down a ladder on the side. That's what this would allow. This language, for clarification, was drawn from one of the model tiny home ordinances, I believe the one that is under consideration, if not adopted, in Oregon. Fresno doesn't have this particular language. They instead just rely on the building code requirements, I believe.
We hadn't talked about this earlier, and that was the, could be a discrepancy between using the ANSI standards in the California Building Code. But I'm just going to read this. Basically, the ANSI code covers the issue of lofts. In fact, the new tiny house amendments for the 2018 IRC Code Appendix Q borrowed heavily from the ANSI 119.5 for loft requirements. And then specifically, ANSI 119.5 in Section 3-2.4, size of alternative exits requires an escape window of a minimum of 24 by 17 inches in lofts. Thus, all builders of the movable tiny houses are providing the alternative egress, emergency escape, per ANSI, and it does not need to cite the California Building Code.
Because it puts specific quantitative standards
Right.
in place of that?
And it addresses those two issues.
Okay, okay.
The loft and the escape.
Chester, did you have?
Well, that was the exact reason why I thought it should just be taken out of this ordinance.
Exactly, and I agree.
Okay?
Yeah.
Let's see, we had minutes of a city council meeting here. But we also have an information bulletin from the Department of Housing and Community Development Estate Agency, Division of Codes and Standards, and subject is tiny homes. And on page two of that, this is Attachment C now, page two. In the background at the top of the page, it talks about, in order to be occupied, a tiny home must comply with the standards of and be approved as one of the following types of structures: a HUD code manufactured home, MH, California residential code or California building code home, factory-built housing, recreational vehicle, park trailer, or camping cabin. Now, this is an information bulletin, so it is not clear to me the legal standing of the assertions in this document. But I'm wondering, is a movable tiny home classified as a manufactured home? Is it a CRC or CBC home? I take it not, because those standards are somewhat different, at least. Is it factory-built housing? Broad, I would say it is. And park trailer or camping cabin? Could be any of those.
If you look through them, you'll see which ones are governed by the ANSI standard. And the only one I can see is the recreational vehicle.
As proposed, the movable tiny houses that would be approvable under this ordinance are a species of recreational vehicle, specifically a species that meets the cited ANSI standards 119.2, 119.5, and that are designed and built to look like a conventional building structure, as discussed previously, not your typical RV. It's thus a species that doesn't quite map into the, cleanly map into these categories by HCD from 2016.
Okay, I think that, okay. It says it's not allowed. Oh, okay, but if it is, falls in one of those categories, so by this HCD memo, it is allowed. Okay, that's all of my questions for the moment. Any others from the commission? All right, then why don't we open the public hearing? I have a baker's dozen little green cards here, and I will just call people in the order in which I received the cards. And please limit yourself to the three minutes. When the red light comes on, let's wrap it up. First Xavier Kabarga and Mr. Wirick on deck.
Thank you. I get to be first.
And your name and address, and do you live in the city?
I live in Oakview.
Okay.
Yeah. But I yearn to live in the city and have lived in the city for many years prior. I don't have to tell this body that state bill, 8665-852 blah blah blah, requires ADUs and that we have almost 350 need for that amount. So as I started thinking about it, I said, well, why not tiny houses? Many of the public's objections to tiny houses have to do with, we don't want ADUs, but since they are.
Don't have that choice.
That's right. So why not tiny houses? And Mr. Chairman, earlier you said, and I hope I quoted you accurately, classifying tiny houses as ADUs leaves you subject to all the other regulations around ADUs. And indeed, that seems to be what we're really talking about tonight, is how can the tiny houses fall into the legal, the safety, you know, all the standards required of ADUs? And so again, my question was why not tiny houses if we are subjecting them to all those standards? I sent yesterday a proposal for the implementation of ADUs in tiny houses, a three-page PDF, to, I believe, all of you. And my purpose was, I wanted to find out, well, okay, if this gets approved, the ordinance is approved, well, what then? What happens first? And how do we assure the standards that we're now talking about? And as I did it, I attempted, in my naive-to-your ways, my own way, to, again, talk about how one would propose this. You know, I'm a homeowner. I want to put a tiny house. What do I do? What happens first? And so I'm just hoping that some of the ideas put forth will help, you know, the implementation, the idea that this is not such a radical thing, and that it can fit in with the required ADUs. So thank you for giving that a look. And then I had some comments on things I heard. Oh, you talked about tonight, the chassis frames are not exactly standard for housing. But after all, they get skirted, they get bushes and trees, and no one really sees them. And also, as far as tracking permits and licensing, that's part of what I'm addressing here. I'm even suggesting there might be fees, licensing fees and application fees, for tiny houses that would make them similar, that would kind of match the fees that someone applying to build an ADU would encounter with building inspections and so forth, so that there's not such a diversity between the two elements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Wirick, you're up. And Dan, is it Swan or Swanner?
Swanner.
Swanner, that's what I thought. Okay.
As one of the people that's going to look at your recommendations, I just want to make a couple of comments broadly. And that is, number one, I'm happy to see that it's acknowledged, that the state's pretty much said, it's not a matter of whether you're going to allow infill or not, you will allow infill in your city, and it's a matter of how you manage it. And it's a matter of whether, and my further comment is, I think it's clear that the way, where the law is going and the successive bills are going in the state legislature, that you maintain more discretion if you manage it actively, rather than try to just, you know, put your head in the sand and deny, that you have to allow well-managed infill. If you don't allow well-managed infill, you're going to start having things imposed on you that you don't really want, like, for example, three-story apartment buildings and things like that. That's what I see the reality is. I want to make a couple of comments about things I've heard, and then in my three minutes. Number one, traffic. The reality is, I want to make a couple of comments, because there've been comments about if we allow more ADUs, we have more traffic. I would submit the exact opposite is true if you look at the facts. If you, for example, look at the percent living and employed in the county between Ventura, Orange, Los Angeles, and Santa Barbara County, Ventura is the lowest percentage of all four counties by a large factor. 50.9% compared to 64.6%, 81.4% and 69.9% for the other counties respectively.
This is, I'm sorry, this is the percentage of people living in the county that work in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
So I want to reclaim my time for that question. Number two, if we bring that question into the cities, the statistic is that only 22.6% of Ventura County's workforce both lives and works in the same city. So not only were the lowest county in terms of living and working in the county, we're the lowest, among the lowest in terms of living and working in the city, which means you have to commute. Furthermore, guess what Ojai is? The highest percentage of city shares of food and accommodation service jobs by far in the county, more than double any other city. The kinds of jobs that people have, they can't live here now. So the more that we can provide alternatives consistent with the character of our city, the more that we will reduce commuting traffic. At 7:30 in the morning, those aren't visitors. Those are commuters. Wanted to further comment that in terms of water, that's also what I've heard that issue, if you look at all of the statistics for water use, residential is de minimis, meaning vanishingly small in terms of our water issues. Furthermore, the state's increasingly saying, for things like parking and water use, that ADUs as extensions of primary residences, and I'm going to wind this up, severely limited in being able to use that criteria. And bottom line, if you're within a half mile of a trolley, you can't have a parking requirement for an ADU by state law. Do we want to get rid of our trolley? I don't think so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wirick. Dan Swanner, and next up is Anita Hendricks. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name's Dan Swanner. I live at 283 Villanova Road. And I would just like to raise my voice in support of the tiny housing inclusion to the initiative. It's a great way to welcome, you know, kids home from college. It's a great way to have in-laws or extended family members move in, live with you. And the things that I appreciate that are included were architecturally distinct from an RV or a mobile home, and that the tiny homes would comply with current restrictions as far as lot lines and restrictions. That way, you can't just park one in your driveway. It has to be somehow included in the lot lines and the current restrictions. So as a homeowner in Ojai, I just want to raise my voice in support of the tiny home initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Hendricks, and Bill Miley, you're up next.
Hi, my name's Anita Hendricks. I no longer live in the city of Ojai. I may end up moving back. I am in a situation where I have an elder landlord, and if I lose my house, I don't know what I'm going to do. It's very, very hard to find an affordable house in Ojai. And there are people who have a lower income than I do who don't stand a chance. There are older people who, people have lost their homes. We all know this. There have been hundreds of foreclosures in the Ojai Valley. Some of those people are having to look at a way to have a home. I know some who are looking at tiny homes. And these are professional people. There are other people who, an older woman who raised her children here, eligible for HUD, no one would rent her because the competition for housing and the price for housing is so high. It's absolutely, we are in a housing crisis. This is very serious. We need to do everything we can to provide housing for people in this city. Kids who have been raised here all their lives can't come back here and live. We need to have these tiny homes. It's one solution. It may not be all solutions, but it's one. We need to minimize the restrictions we put on these tiny homes. You can't make all these restrictions. We need to make it easier. I'm sorry, safety's important, but sometimes you've got to balance that with the affordability and the doability. The home hookups, I think it's great. Actually, you know what? I wouldn't mind having an extension cord come into my house. I wouldn't mind having the pipe, what do you call that? One of those hoes coming to my house, because that's the same water that we drink anyway. And I wouldn't mind having a composting toilet. I would prefer to have a composting toilet or one of those electric toilets, because we'll save water. One thing I don't want is these houses used for vacation rentals. And I think there should be a restriction placed upon that. I don't know if that's possible. But I don't want more of our housing turned to vacation rental instead of providing housing for people in this city. As far as the roof goes, you know, I saw a lot of regular-made homes that looked like a bomb hit them. What about sprinklers for the roofs? I'm asking you, I'm beseeching you to do all you can to support tiny homes in this community and to remove any hurdles that stand in the way of that. And I also ask that you encourage and do everything you can to create a tiny home enclave, a place where we can have grouping of tiny homes where people can live. And I would like that to be included in this request. So thank you for your time. Please do everything you can to support tiny homes and make it easy for those who need it to have a home. Thank you.
Before Mr. Miley starts, I'd like to ask of staff and the city attorney, is there anything in or intended to be in this text amendment that either mandates affordable rents on tiny homes on wheels, or makes any other concessions to affordable housing? I did not find any.
No, I think the presumption is that, given the small size, they're affordable by design. And I believe that's phrases in the resolution. But in terms of when you say affordable housing, what people typically think of as very low, low, moderate income, where you have defined household incomes and deed restrictions.
Those are defined legal terms for the city, sure.
Correct. And that's generally when people say, you know, affordable with a capital A, that's what I think of. This ordinance is not addressing that at all.
Okay, it is silent on the issue.
It's not silent. It doesn't provide those requirements, which means they aren't automatic. The default is, there's no, the default is that any owner may rent the property for any amount the market will bear, because there's no regulation of that. It's not silent so much as it doesn't require affordability rental, affordable rentals.
Right. And so it would not enter into any of your, the directors or the city building officials' considerations of an application for a tiny home on wheels?
No, I think as the city attorney just said, that essentially would be market-rate rents.
Okay, very good.
It could be used for Airbnb?
That is prohibited.
That's prohibited.
Directly prohibited by, for those reading, following along at home, Table A, which these requirements are subject to, that is Table A of OJ municipal code, section 10-2, 1709, three or four pages in, it prohibits short-term rental of all ADU types of any stripe that would continue for movable tiny houses if approved. In short, no Airbnb.
I think short-term rental of any structure, any residential structure in the city is...
That is correct. Short-term rentals of any structure in the city, with the exception of lawfully permitted hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts that are lawfully operated in full compliance with federal, state, and local law, are prohibited.
Okay.
Chair, may I ask a question of the city attorney?
Please.
Mr. Summers, so is it legal to create a rental cost restriction in the ordinance?
That's a complex question. I'll answer it in a couple of pieces. The first is that the state has preempted the ability to set the initial rental rate of a unit. That's the Costa-Hawkins Act that eliminated certain portions of rent control back in 1994. So the city cannot set the initial rental rate for a unit. The only exception to that is when it is a capital A affordable unit that has been given a special dispensation. Either that would be federal or state funding, or local funding for an affordable housing project.
Or density bonus.
I'm getting there. In return for the funding, the city has the power to set a affordable rental rate. The other exception are density bonus housing, or certain types of transit priority projects and similar types of projects where, in return for an exemption, or a variance, or an adjustment of applicable zoning code standards, like the density bonus, you get a higher density. In return for that higher density, the developer accepts an imposed rental rate that is lower than the market would bear, set at, depending on the project, set at affordable to very low, low, or moderate income units, depending on situation. Absent that type of situation, the city lacks the power to impose a rental, initial rental rate requirement. That's the present state of the law. There are proposals to amend Costa-Hawkins every year. This year, they seem to be gaining a bit more steam than usual, but until such proposal is enacted, the city lacks the power to set the initial rental rate. The city has the power, should the council so choose, to adopt a different type of rent control, which would limit the increases on an annual basis of, usually those are structured to limit them to CPI or something similar. That remains within the power of the city to adopt. The council has not done so. That's a very different conversation than what we're having right now. But in short, the city lacks the power to set initial rental rate for movable tiny homes or any other ADU. The last point to bear in mind is that, as noted by the director, with respect to the state RENA requirements, that is, the regional housing needs allocation requirements, ADUs are presumed affordable by design and thus at the moderate income level. So if approved, the expectation is that the city would be able to count movable tiny homes as moderate income units when built as part of the annual, annual and the eight-year RENA requirements. It's a bit of an open question. We expect, and we will vigorously defend the position, that that allowance extends to both movable tiny homes that are fixed to the land via foundation and movable tiny homes that remain on wheels but are skirted and otherwise permanently in place. That particular question, it's a bit of an open question. As were the only, the second city in the state to consider an ADU ordinance, there has been yet no ruling.
Thank you. That is a concern of mine. As we know, affordable by design has become a meme, but doesn't necessarily bear weight in reality. Someone could build a $200,000 tiny home and, you know, charge $1,700 a month for 400 square foot place. Thus, it's not an affordable by design.
From that point, I mean, one could build a $75,000 tiny home and still charge $1,700 for it.
That too.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Miley. You're up next. And Chris Hilders, you're on deck.
Hello. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I have two parts to my three minutes. First, comments about the draft tiny house ordinance, and second, information on an alternative house design. But a quick summary, I would prefer no tiny houses in our city. Instead, I suggest park home RVs, up to 399 square feet for less money, more living space. I'll present information on them in the second part, my second part. First, if we are to have tiny houses in Ojai, I have the following to say. I've examined the Fresno City tiny house ordinance, as well as considered the tiny house impact it might be in our residential zones. I suggest the following additions and considerations. One, as I understand, tiny houses currently do not count for our regional housing number allocations, RENA numbers, which are in our housing element, part of the general plan. Two, this has to do with moderate, I understand that these are to be moderate. So I'm going to say, one very important omission in the draft is the exact protocol to be used to guarantee they'll always be moderately affordable. Three, a tiny house shall be connected to a water and sewer utility hookup. Reasons, no composting toilet use in the city, or host connections for water. The Fresno city ordinance requires this, and you know that the only city in California that has a tiny house ordinance. Four, all tiny houses are to be located beh- Four, all tiny houses are to be located behind the primary house, out of sight from the street except for corner lots. Neighborhood visuals shall retain the current visual environment. No trailer living shall be visible. Fresno requires this. Five, a plan for outside storage shall be required as there is little storage space inside for stuff, like storage sheds outside. And last one is the requirement for the property owner to have a covenant. Okay. Now for the alternative house, park homes, RVs. And this is what they look like. I have provided each of you with seven pages that detail the characteristics. I've also given Sherry two handouts. These are made by Redmond Homes in, in the Central Valley. One is a Hannahheim Home, one bedroom, full kitchen for 399 square feet for $39,000. The other is a Freeman Home, 389 square feet priced at $26,000. What are their values? They have 399 square feet, sleeping space for full height ceiling, have their full kitchen, a full bathroom, a nice living room. They're priced between 30 and 60,000. They look like houses. They have separate closable bedrooms. There's a storage space. No ladder to climb for the second level, and they have complete connections to wastewater, water supply, and electric utilities. I urge your commission to seriously consider adding park home RVs, their concept, their design, and their built structure to the accessory dwelling unit building ordinance in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are these built to either ANSI or California building standards?
ANSI standards can roll to the site even though they can't be pulled on a highway tire as the recreational vehicles are allowed to be involved.
Okay. 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 Chris, you're up, and Wendy is next on deck.
Chris Hilders, 704 Park Road since 1969. This is a grave decision that you people have before you because it will change the complexity of the city forever, in my opinion. Listening to the council tonight, I think that there is a, there's not dissension, but there's a lot of questions to be asked here tonight that have not adequately been answered. And I can't see how you could make a recommendation to the city council to continue with this thorny issue until more of these issues have been answered. Certainly, listening to the city attorney, to Mr. Connolly, and you people that are on the commission answering very good questions, I think that the only way you could continue is to have some kind of, at least an eight by 10 of what's really going to be required for somebody that wants to have a tiny home in Ohi and what's going to be restricted on the other side. Because as it is now, I don't think the general public understands the gravity of the situation and how it will change the time. And I think that all of you have good questions to ask, but there's dissension even among you, and we don't have clear answers, the general public, about what is needed and what should be given to the council. So, I can't see how you could recommend to go ahead at this time to change the ordinance in the city, which has been this way for over 100 years until we have better answers. It may be on an eight by 10. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hilders? And let me see, Kathy Richards on deck.
Hi there, Wendy Hilders. Well, I had to change a lot of what I was going to say. I feel like I'm really in the land of Jabberwocky. To take some issue that's so, so complex and so difficult, I've really done a lot of research, and throughout the country, across the country, cities have tackled this issue over the years. It's been years now. And always come back to the same conclusion that it is very complicated, but for the most part, they've decided that this, an RV, which is what a tiny home on wheels is, should be placed in a special area where they can create a village or a community or whatever it is. But, no one has placed them throughout the city like Fresno. Fresno was the first city in California to do this. It's created an ordinance, and that's the only way this can happen, is if we, as a city, create an ordinance which says that these RVs can go into private yards. That's what it's all about. Fresno created such an ordinance and is allowing them to be towed into backyards in residential neighborhoods. All others have recommended that they remain in RV areas to function legally there. And even if Ohi wanted to use that idea of parks to agree to, we have no land for this. So, the advocates are pressuring the city to get them into the only place we have, and that's our residential neighborhoods. It cannot fit there. There are two, look at the questions that have come up tonight. There are no good answers, and I think it's just touching the top of the, what the problem areas really are. An RV, whether it has the wheels on or the wheels off, is still an RV. I read where you cannot even attach a second, a tiny house on wheels to a permanent foundation because it's built to the different building standards. And it's just a way, this is an attempt to sidestep traditional building codes to take advantage of the decades-old planning that has made Ohi such a desirable place to live, ignoring all secret considerations and avoiding all taxes paid by citizens for city services. This just would not be fair. Ohi needs a lot more time to study this complex issue. It's far too important to be rushed. There are no answers here tonight. If we started writing the questions and answers down, they wouldn't be complete, and there'd still be a thousand more that the public has a right to ask and listen to. So, I said, there's no way to successfully integrate recreational vehicles into residential neighborhoods. It's not a compatible fit. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Richards, you're up, and Charletta Herb next.
Hi. I'm Kathy Richards. I live in the city of Ohi. I've owned my home in Ohi for 21 years. I do not agree that this is a good idea. I don't think we should have RVs in people's backyards as a solution to a housing crisis that may not exist. I don't think we have a housing crisis in this town. I think that this is a push that's coming from outside of town that wants to change the town so that people that aren't paying taxes here, aren't voting here, are gonna have access to something that we have, we who live here, have built, and we cherish our lifestyle here. I think that this proposal to have backyard trailer homes has serious consequences that everyone is hoping won't happen, but I, I don't think we should take the risk. I'm very impressed with all the reading that this commission has done and the good questions that they've asked. I don't think that they got answers to most of their questions, and that most of the questions that you've asked need to be answered, and, and the answers need to be embodied if you're going to do any ordinance. The answers that you got from staff over here, to the extent you got answers, should be put in the ordinance if you're going to do an ordinance, which I don't think you should do. One of the things that's really disturbing to me in the proposed ordinance is how much discretion the planning director has in how this whole thing would be carried out. And I've lived here 21 years, and we've had 10 planning directors in 21 years. And so, that means there's, they always come from somewhere else. Okay? So, then they have a learning curve. They have no clue what is the nature of this town. And we have little things here and there all around town that exist because of planning directors who came here as a stepping stone out of a bad situation or into a better situation, and we were the transition point in their career. And we have things in our town that we regret because of that. So, all these things that are in the planning director's discretion, we don't know who that person will be. We change planning directors all the time. So, I do not want to give that much power to one person who is maybe just passing through, and I have, I'm not saying anything negative about Mr. Connolly. I'm speaking of the history of this town. And I think that we should be really careful how much power we give to one person to make decisions about what, what are our neighborhoods going to look like? You know, so you're not going to allow a hose, but what are you going to allow? You're, you know, you're not going to require a sewer connection, but what are you going to require? You can't have an electrical cord going through the window, but what can you have? You know, so your answers didn't really answer their questions. And there's a lot of that in this situation. So, I don't think you should send anything back to the council. I think that you should just kill it now. And if you feel like you can't do that, then I suggest that you do a major rewrite. Thanks.
Thank you. Charletta Herb and Tara Saylor on deck. What was that? Oh, okay. I guess the...
Hi. I'm Charleta Herb, marriage family therapist. I've lived in the area six years, part of that time in Miramonte, part of it on Drown Avenue in the city, and presently in Oakview. I commute here as a marriage family therapist to see clients. I'm going to try to address Wendy Hilders' ad that was placed last week, I believe, where she addresses tiny homes on wheels as a backyard blight, and I would like to contrast that with the reality of the ordinance draft. So, just to say, it's spreading misinformation clearly about tiny homes, and you can read the publicly posted ordinance draft for yourself. According to the ad, we're talking about unregulated mini trailer parks. Well, this isn't about parks or villages in this ordinance. This is about accessory dwelling units. The proposed ordinance would regulate through permits for both landlords and tiny houses, I do believe. The sewer connection, none required. Truth, applicants must prove to the director and building official adequate safe and sanitary systems for all utilities. The ad, what's to stop them from being used as vacation rentals? Truth, the same rules apply as with all other properties under the ban on Airbnbs. Ad, just increasing water use. Truth, these homes design, are designed to conserve water. Ad, fast-tracking legislation, legislation here. The truth is that this has been in discussion for about three years. Ad says that it's going to affect property values. Truth, these will not be visible from the front of the house and take up less than 500 square feet. We've heard 440, actually. This increases property values through design standards and through increasing income potential as long-term residences. So, I've had some good conversations. I was granted 10 minutes with the Realtors Board, and it ended up being a wonderful 45-minute conversation, and I'm following that up with a letter to address all of their concerns. So, yeah, I've been putting a lot of thought into this. I also wanted to bring something that was just shared with me by McKinley Barnes. She said she'd just been informed by one of the managers of Farmer and the Cook that she can't find employees. The only applicant she's receiving resumes from live in Oxnard, and she knows they won't be willing to continue to make the trip to Ohi regularly for such a low-paying job with no benefits. This equates to those with service jobs that can't afford to live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Tara Saylor and Nick Hyde Smith, next up.
Hello, Tara Saylor. I live, resident here in Ohi, 208A South Ventura Street. I just want to be fairly brief and just say I'm appreciative of all the questions that are being asked tonight, and I do hope these questions continue. I know you guys have been working tirelessly. In the moments that you've been able to focus on this, I know we have big issues on our table, and I hope that this one can soon, not soon in a rushing way, but soon can pass. I just want to say, I'm 32. I've been a resident for 25 years. I lived here for 20 years, moved away for a bit, came back, and I love this town. I love the efforts everybody puts into it. I know half of you from different ways throughout this town, and I think it's important that everybody is getting considered, and I appreciate all of that. My biggest point I want to make is that we evolve and that we create options, put options on the table. Is this going to be an easy solution for people? No. It's going to be hard. It's going to be hard to put in what is needed on a piece of property coming from a building background. I was a, worked for architects and interior designers. I'm also a builder myself. I know this is not going to be an easy solution. I know tiny homes are not going to come rushing in, but to have an option on the table, it sounds great to me. Just like nature does, it evolves, and I hope that Ohi can evolve, but also evolve in an inclusive manner. So, I just want to express my appreciation and my approval for tiny homes. Thanks.
Nick Hyde Smith and Kim Tuk, I'm sorry.
Tookferian.
Tookferian, okay? You're next.
Hi. My name's Nick Hyde Smith. I've lived in Ohi for 19 years. I'm against the tiny house amendment. Tiny houses are a gimmick and not a solution for affordable housing. We need to provide safe structures that make sense. We need to have structures that conform to building codes and contribute taxes and fees for the services they use. Tiny house people will not be paying these, and the rest of Ohi's residents will have to pick up the bill. Do we want people living downtown Ohi off the grid using composting toilets or an outhouse with a hole in the ground? I also disagree that they were cute. I think the ones on display looked like carney wagons. Please be sensible and stop this amendment now. And, thank you. Also, my neighbor is building an ADU right now, and he's doing a really good job. It looks great, and that's what we need more of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kim, you're up next, and then Deborah Pendron.
Deborah, if you'd rather develop, she's not here.
Okay.
Okay. First off, I did go into the tiny homes there, and I have been in others, and I think before anyone can make an educated decision, whether they be for them or against them, they should climb up the unrailled staircase, crawl in the loft area to the furthest sleeping area, crawl into what is defined, actually, the definition of a confined space, and bed down. And then imagine now, while you're in this place with one way in and one way out, that your candle, your incense, something happens, an electrical fire, and you are upstairs. Now, that means you have to crawl with smoke around you on your hands and knees and make it down that staircase and walk through the flames to escape. It is not practical. There is not an alternate way of escaping that's within reason. What are you going to do? Jump out your window, slide down the roof? That's, that doesn't make sense. So, I think everyone here, before they make a decision, should do that. Then you have an educated decision. Also, I have done a lot of research on composting toilets. They require a fan to blow over them, and to keep the interior from smelling, that is exhausted to the atmosphere. We have a valley with an inversion layer. There are restaurants nearby. You have neighbors nearby. There's, those things are allowed to be closer than 15 feet to the fence. So, now, you're going to be smelling your neighbor's bowel movements. That's not going to be nice either. I suggest you read about composting toilets. They also, the people have them complain about where they're going to dispose that stuff. It's something they dread doing, carrying it out to their composting area because it stinks. It's going to go to the furthest area, which is going to be furthest from their house and closer to the neighbors. So, that will cause problems too. And besides being impractical for long-term habitation, housing for the elderly, families, and children, and emergency shelters due to their size limitations and the lack of permanent utility provisions by the commercial builders, tiny homes are not fire-safe, at least none of the ones I have seen. There are no stair rails. The sleeping areas are difficult and awkward to enter and exit. The loft area must be navigated on hands and knees. There are no secondary emergency exits. There's two doors downstairs. You're upstairs sleeping. Essentially serving as a hot box or a fire trap. The sleep area furthest from the open staircase is the most dangerous. The sleep area furthest from the open staircase is the most dangerous. The sleeping areas are, by definition, confined spaces and to, and according to the NFPA, are not safe for human occupation, and by law are to display a warning sign stating such. That sign is to state, "Warning: This area is not designed to be occupied and shall be used only for storage." So, we want to put in houses with no sleeping areas.
Thank you, ma'am. And Tracy Hudak. Ooh, the last card.
Always got to drop the phone first, sorry. Hi. Thank you, commissioners and staff, for your hard work on this. It's evident that you're giving this deep thought on behalf of everybody in the community. My name's Tracy Hudak. I live in Ojai, Oak View, sorry. But I serve on the Steering Committee for the county's economic vitality strategic plan, and I represent the creative economy on that committee. And I just, I'm hoping to contribute a deeper understanding. What we've realized on the county level is how profoundly entwined the fate of affordable housing and our county's economy, families, and future are. They're really gripped together. And so, just wanted to point out that only 30% of Ventura County residents can actually afford to buy a home here. That is, in your field of vision, 10 people, only three of us can buy. We are 13th in the nation in the least affordable rental market in the country, and this is a crisis facing, and I have citations for you. This is a crisis facing all of California, hence the RENA, the RENA work. But for Ventura County, it's especially pronounced because we've had negative economic growth. 2014 to 2016 was less growth than even during the economic recession in 2008. We're faced with very complex challenges because of this, and our cost of living is causing vital employers like Amgen to take jobs elsewhere because they can't afford to give their employees the quality of life that they can other places, and it's barring other employers, I'm sure, from coming here. And the inability to find good jobs and affordable home is driving our persistent negative migration. More people move out of the county than move in. Our population, the folks on our road, just to double, back up with what Mr. Ryberg was saying, the traffic that we do experience is commuter traffic. It's only, only birth rates are contributing to any kind of growth, not actual people moving in. So, and this is all exacerbated by income inequality, which Ventura County has a real problem with as well in national reports, and, and the cost to build on developable land because of SOAR has made it a little bit more expensive. And SOAR was really designed to encourage us to build infill, but our cities, as you know, haven't been able to do that, and the public hasn't been behind it because I don't think we understand these entwined fates. And so, I just want to commend you for considering this. It'll empower residents to build and put their destiny in their hands, and will empower property owners to take care of, to address their economic needs, and will help the city of Ojai deliver on RENA and maybe bring some of these unpermitted units online for our numbers, and provide vision and leadership and policy tools for the other cities in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all, that's all the speakers' cards that we have. Is there anyone else here present today who wishes to speak on this topic? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Oh, please come up. And for the record, state your name and address and whether or not you're a resident of the city.
Troy Becker, 100 Longhorn Lane. I know a few people. It's a tough thing. I think everyone had here really wonderful comments, both for and against, and I'm kind of in that planning commissioner mode where I'm absorbing and trying to read that paperwork. It's interesting. I'm also manufactured, I have a manufactured home dealer license, so when I see tiny homes and things like this, I, it seems most similar to a manufactured home. So, I know those laws pretty well and the requirements, and it's kind of really brings an interesting thing to it. I haven't made any decisions on this. I'm just kind of absorbing it all and trying to understand it like you are, but one of the things that I think would be nice is to identify some properties. As you remember, when we did the housing areas, there were like six or seven distinct areas, as I recall.
Twenty-two neighborhoods, I thought.
Yeah, neighborhood housing. We talked about that for a long time. Is to actually go into some of those neighborhoods, pick specific, you know, homeowners that would cooperate and kind of see how things might shake out. There's neighborhoods here. We have a rental here, and we rent it out under market. A tiny home probably wouldn't work in the back, but it might pass muster, and I think it would affect the neighborhood pretty poorly, even though it would be, you know, probably a good thing, you know, money-wise for us, but I just don't think the neighbors would like it. But there's other places. I like the tiny home village idea. I think that's great. So, so maybe doing, you know, kind of a charrette, actually have a little subcommittee, try and get it done quickly, go into the neighborhoods and just kind of see what the footprint might be. Is there a solar impact, a view shed impact, even though it says it's not supposed to? As planning commissioners, we all know that, that's somewhat nefarious. But there's probably other neighborhoods where it really would work well, and there's probably are some lots where maybe a village would work really well, and that'd be kind of cool for Ojai to have that. But you could also do modular homes, like the one Mr. Miley showed. That looks like a Silvercrest, actually. To me, I'm not sure, but those are very common now, and they're very, very nice, by the way. So, that's one thing I think maybe you might want to consider because I think this needs a little more thought. I think they do have a place. The other thing I wanted to point out is, I think what we're, what I'm spending a lot of time on, and my wife as well, is the homelessness issue. This really brings to me that to light. We have a real problem with homelessness, and, you know, most of the people that are homeless are like you and me. They're not bad people, and we've got a big problem in Ojai, and we haven't really done anything to address it, and we can. We really can. There's some great solutions out there. And I actually talked to a guy this morning. He's a developer in LA, and he's working with synagogues, churches, and mosques to build housing for people that are homeless, and it can be done very reasonably, reasonably, and the rents are low, and it's working pretty well. So, I think, you know, as a planning commission, it would be great to really have that discussion and figure out ways that we can bring some solutions to Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there, I see another hand up. If you haven't spoken before on this topic, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Vina Lusardo. I live in the Valley. I wasn't going to speak today, but I just thought I'd mention a few items. First, I want to just let the commissioners know that there's a lot of movement happening within tiny home ordinances throughout the state of California. The, what we've been moving forward with, the tiny home ordinance since about three years ago, has actually been looked at fairly closely beyond Fresno in counties like San Luis Obispo and the city of Los Angeles. They've taken our ordinance that Dan Fitzpatrick has started in San Luis Obispo, for instance, and the planning commission there was directed by city council to take a look at our ordinance and possibly use it in San Luis Obispo for themselves. And yesterday, in the city of LA, the PLUM Committee, the planning commission, had also been speaking quite a bit to Dan Fitzpatrick about using our ordinance and Fresno's ordinance as a foundation to move forward tiny home ordinance in the city of LA. And their opinion is, maybe in June, planning commission will be reviewing it, and it was very successful yesterday with the outcome of the meeting, and they even said that in September of 2018, city council can possibly adopt it because they know how urgent and dire homelessness and affordable housing is in LA, so much more than here. And if LA can do something, tiny home ordinance approval in such a huge city like Los Angeles, taking our ordinance, I would imagine that we would be able to do something like that. So, I just want to let everyone know that we are actually making an impact for other, not just the state of California, but other cities and municipalities all over the country because everyone is struggling with this issue. Everyone I spoke to always says the same thing. There is no middle class. There's shrinking of just the top 1% and incredibly lower income, that there's just no options left for housing. It also really impacts people not just living, wanting to live in tiny homes, but several other different industries, like business owners. I know many people in, in city of Ojai and also the Valley, like me even. I want to be able to hire people to work with me and other companies, like Simplify Power. I know that they've been looking to hire people, but they can't because no one can afford to live here. They have to possibly move to Oxnard, their facility, and hire people there and take their businesses elsewhere. So, it really hurts our economy, our community, and the way that we can survive and thrive in, you know, as a, as a really healthy community, economy. In respect to what kind of properties we can really impact with tiny homes, I have 15 seconds. There's a neighborhood, for instance, along Drown Avenue that has about 50 to 100 feet width depth. The depth is about 200 to 300 feet. They're really, really deep lots. At least 2/3 of them are not usable. You only have a primary unit at the front, and then there's at least 2/3 of the property that's not being used. There's so much space there, and so that's an obvious location or neighborhood that can really benefit from these AD uses with tiny homes on wheels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who'd like to speak? Yes, please come forward, sir. Give us your name and address.
Chet Hilgers, 212 Grand Avenue. I agree with Vino and Wendy Hilgers. I think there's a place for RVs, and it's in an RV park. And being the only one that operates an RV park in the city of Ojai, I think if you're going to do something with RVs, it has to be in an RV park. It has to be something that's permitted with all the rules and regulations, all the environmental regulations that you have to go through for a reason, for safety, aesthetics, everything else. I think trying to put an RV in a neighborhood, in a residential zone, is wrong. It's wrong. And I think everyone's going to get hell for it if you do it. I think it's not going to work well. It's not going to be affordable. It's not going to be environmental. The only place you can do it is to designate some areas, maybe like, like Vina said, take some areas in Ojai that were suited for low-income housing and try one. Try a small group of RVs, a tiny home village. I think that's the only way you can, you can approach this and get it done and make it work and be affordable. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any more takers? All right, we'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the commission. Chester, would you like to start?
You know, I'd like to have someone else start.
Okay.
Because I've always, I've always started these things because I'm at the end of the table.
Ah, that's because you sit at the end.
I would like to hear other people's...
AB Bobby, you'd like to start.
I'll start. I don't even know where to start because I think this is such a complicated issue. And I think there are good points made on every side of this issue. I think we have a serious problem with housing. I will agree with that. But I think we are in part responsible for that, that we've created this problem. We've created, we've created this problem through our over-regulating. We've created this problem through the costs of permitting and making the building of any housing unit so outrageously expensive that most people can't afford to do this anymore. And I say, have said this so many times, that we need to really take a look at our permitting process and the prices on everything, and we need to address that. That's a huge issue we need to address. As far as people in Ventura County not living and working in the same area, all I see in this area is housing units being built, specifically in Ventura. And I say, who's going to live in these houses? Where are they going to work? How far are they going to have to travel? What we really need to do is look at jobs, bringing jobs into this area. The only jobs we have in this area are very low-paying jobs. I have three adult children. They all live either with me or in, in real estate that I own. We own a business. We work eight zillion hours a week. They cannot afford to live on their own because you can't really earn money here. There are a few exceptions. But the majority of the jobs here don't really pay very well, and that's the reason that people don't live here. We need to think about how we can bring in a business to this town, other than the Ojai Valley Inn, low-paying jobs. We need to bring in a business and make this area business-friendly, which it is not. It is also over-regulated and too expensive to run a business in this area. If you look at the new people coming in and running businesses here, they are not people who have started here and supported themselves and built themselves up. The money comes from someplace else. The money comes from a business in another area. They had money. It's, it's not Joe Blow lives down the street from me, decides he's going to start a business, and he, you know, is successful. It doesn't work that way anymore. And I don't think that, that we have a realistic handle on what's really happening in this town as far as business goes. I think a tiny house is basically an RV. If you slap shingles on it, does that make it good, bad, or indifferent? Quite frankly, I'd rather have an airstream in my backyard than some of the tiny houses I've seen. Now, the person who brought in these photographs, they're really lovely, but I can't say that most of the tiny houses I've seen, the tiny houses at Boku Superfood, if somebody put them in next to me and I had to look at that, I would not be happy. I think they're awful. I think they look like little cutesy, there's, I don't like the way they're designed. Now, somebody else may think they're great. I may think an airstream is wonderfully designed, or I might want a metal structure in my backyard. I think that you can't write an ordinance on such a complicated issue that's as vague as this. It's, we, I have been on this board for about a year and a half now, and I, and we have guidelines for this and guidelines for that and guidelines for this. They're not specific. We don't have what Santa Barbara has. These are the 10 colors you can pick from. Pick one. We spend weeks arguing over nuances of white and gray and is it a natural color? Let's be specific. Let's come up with 10 colors we like, and let's pick those. I, let's see. And I've heard time and time again, oh, this is a much better alternative. We don't want three-story apartments. Well, maybe we do. Maybe instead of everybody complaining with every developer who comes to town who wants to put up a hotel because the only thing that's going to make money here, maybe we need a really beautifully designed, three-story mixed-use building that's going to have affordable housing, that's going to provide enough density, and density is critical to this, to make it worthwhile for developer to build it in order to get housing. And it's got to be controlled by the city, by the government, to make sure that those houses are actually affordable. So, it's a real, it's not just a matter of we need more houses. We need jobs that can pay people. We need to attract people who've, who have skill sets. We need them to want to move here and work here. I would love to see a much larger plan. I'd like to see a big-picture plan for what we want to do with Ojai. I feel like this tiny house ordinance is so typical of what happens is that, oh, we need housing. Well, let's approve this, so let's approve that. We need to look at the big picture, and I don't think we're anywhere near being ready to recommend that the city council approve this ordinance. I think there's just too many questions, too many issues. I would really like to recommend to the city council that we look at a big picture for the city of Ojai, and we figure out... the city of Ojai, and we figure out what we want to do in terms of housing. Where are there good areas for a dense area of housing that's going to be affordable? How can we make this city attractive to a business? We have a seven-and-a-half acre parcel right in the center of town. How do we attract somebody who's going to bring good jobs to this town where people will earn enough money that they can live here and then build some housing that is affordable? We get a lot of people who come here, who have a lot of money, who've moved, sold a house in LA for, you know, several million dollars, and they move here, they don't really work here, and they love it, and it's beautiful. And all of the rest of us who have these low-paying jobs make their vacation life very nice, and they're very happy to be here. And, but then we have the other element of people who say, young people who would like to live here, and they can't. And they deserve a chance to get a job and a chance to have a decent housing. But I think that this is so much, so piecemeal and so like grasping at straws. This is not the way to do it. I think that our problems are so complicated here that, and I think that's why we've had so much animosity over every issue that comes up over the last two years, is because there are problems and, you know, I could go on and on, but somebody else should have. And with these housing units too, it's like, let's, let's ask our staff to do some research into manufactured housing that we can stand behind and get to the point where the city of Ojai says, we want these permit-ready for, you know, this area. And, you know, you always talk about bulk buying. Let's find out how many pieces, people who would be interested in doing something like that for an ADU in their backyard. And a lot of these companies that I've seen, if you buy multiple units, the, the price comes down, and some of them are quite beautiful. I just think there's so many things to talk about, and I don't think that this ordinance is anywhere near being ready to be passed.
Ray? Pardon? Oh, I thought you and I would go last.
Thank you, Commissioner Corbin. I think some of the points you made are valid. I don't think all of them are. I think the discussion about classism here and the haves and the have-nots, because that's basically what you were talking about regarding jobs and the certain demographic that we're discussing.
I'm talking about the fact that we are not business-friendly and we don't, we haven't developed jobs in most of Ventura and Ojai.
Well, that was part of what you spoke of, and, and I'm not a business owner because, so I can't speak to business-friendly or not-business-friendly. I do know the challenges that business owners I know have here, for sure. But I was speaking, you know, I just like to, to say what is what is. So the city of Ojai is four square miles. There's a certain economic bracket that can afford to live here, and there are lots of jobs, as, as Councilman Wirick mentioned, on his stats regarding commuters, that a lot of people from the service industry have to travel a long way. A lot of the traffic in the morning is commuter traffic, which is the antithesis of what Kathy and Councilwoman Francine have been working on to create a bike-friendly town. Yet you go in the morning and, and, you know, I live down the street and I take my life in my hands whenever I get on my bike. I almost got hit today. So, I don't think it's that complicated of an issue. I keep hearing it's complicated, it's complicated. To me, from over here in my seat, it's not complicated. There are arena numbers we have to meet. Otherwise, the state's going to impose something on us that we won't have a choice. Why are we speaking about tiny homes today? Because the ten or twelve people that took their life in their own hands and built tiny homes are living them in them, and they're not sanctioned. So they came forward, and they were proactive, and they got it on agendas, and they spoke to the council, and the council took action because they were vocal. And they took their life in their, you know, they empowered themselves to build a home that they're living in. Some of them are designers of tiny homes. So that's why we're speaking about it, because they came forward. Now, I don't see owners, you know, I, I, I'm not opposed to these designs that Mr. Moyley brought forward on the park RVs. But when you look at a, and, and I agree that the tiny homes at Boku, you know, and that we had at Earth Day, weren't the best example of tiny homes. But I've been in a lot of them that are gorgeous, and other than the scale, there's nice as many homes I've been in that are 2,000-square-foot homes. They were done with elegance, they were done with grace, they were done with an aesthetic. So I think, you know, pointing to that as an example is, is, does a disservice to the Given that they're skirted, I think the misnomer that, you know, we're throwing RVs in the, in a backyard, you know, once they're skirted and there's landscaping, you don't know it's an RV. Is it mobile? Yes. Does the ordinance need work? For sure. I mean, there's no way I would sign off or say, run with this ordinance. All the questions we brought up need to be addressed, and the ordinance needs, needs to be massaged and then looked at again. But I'm not opposed to quote an RV because it's called an RV in a backyard, because it doesn't look like an RV. You look at it, you don't see wheels. It's not an airstream. You wouldn't even know it's an RV. You'd go, wow, this is a really small house. Does someone live in here? So I don't have the, you know, I don't have a problem with calling it an RV. I don't have a problem with the ANSI codes, because those are pretty strict codes. I do think, because of the arena numbers and the state mandate, we need to be looking at all forms of unconventional housing if they pass muster. And, you know, people have already heard me speak of straw-bale homes, which are legal in, in, in the county, Cobb homes, super-Adobe homes, modular homes, prefab homes, tiny homes. We need to be able to look at all of them. To me, this is the first step, looking at the tiny home. Again, why? Because the people that are already living in them have it, have it, or are designing them have it at stakeness. Now, in terms of the taxes, I don't know how that all works out. I know Mr. Carbaga had some ideas regarding fees and, and things like that that would offset some of that. I would need to look further in that. So that's an important, important issue, because I don't want an imbalance of a homeowner paying taxes and someone living in a tiny home doesn't, so they're not contributing to the economy. So that, that needs to look at. Thank you.
Chester, would third suit you? Okay. John?
Chester's taking the easy way out.
I've been very vocal on the subject for years. In fact, I started this initiative three years ago. Right, Vina? So I, I, I think, I figure I've earned the right to hear whatever else, everyone else speaks, because I spoke so much on this issue before. So there you go.
I'll jump in here. First of all, I really appreciate all the people who are sitting through this meeting. We've been going for two and a half hours now, and all the people that got up to speak. Your input is incredibly valuable to us on the commission, and I think this is a really huge issue. One of the reasons I asked at the beginning of the meeting, you know, what's the output of this, tonight's meeting, is I think what I'm hearing from the commissioners is, we need to study this longer. We can't just turn this around and say, oh, here you go, city council, you wanted this, we'll just send it back to you. I think we need to really take all this input that we've gotten from people and, and really turn it into something that, that we feel comfortable with. That being said, I'm, I'm not a big proponent of these tiny homes. I mean, they sound wonderful, but I do not like the idea of a home being mobile. If it's going to be something that we're going to approve, that's going to be part of our community, I think it needs to share certain aspects with our housing, which is already here, which means they have to be on a fixed foundation. The foundation needs to be in a location that meets all the setback requirements and so on. I, I have a huge problem with someone saying, oh, I'll just roll this trailer in. I mean, I live up on the Sunset Track, and if someone were to do that next to me, they would be looking right into my, into our yard, into our house. I mean, it's, it's, it needs to match the parameters that we already have in place for housing. I also think utilities need to be permanently attached and that this, this house, this, this tiny home needs to be a part of our community. I don't, I don't want it to be something that just comes in and disrupts everything and then takes off. And I think the ordinance, as it's written, does not reflect that, and I would like to see that included.
Not yet, he said. Please, go ahead, Kathy.
Right. I don't think it's a complicated issue. I, I'm going to say that I'm in favor of the tiny homes. I do think the ordinance needs some work, and I think, and I do appreciate everyone's comments. I agree with John that it's crucial for us to hear pros and cons and what have you to make a good decision here. But I think, I mean, the concerns that I'm hearing from most people are, and I completely understand them, the issue about not paying property tax. I think the thing that we may want to look into is there a permit fee that would go to the city that would compensate, but that needs to be explored. I do think that the ANSI standards should be followed and not the building code and not to mix the two. The other one is, the tiny homes are, what we're looking at tonight is for them to be part of the ADU ordinance. And that being said, they would follow the design guidelines with some additional ones that would include, say, the skirting. So as far as compatibility with the neighborhood, just like any other house or ADU that goes through the permitting process, these will be looked at too. So with design guidelines, I don't feel like there would be an issue. The other thing that we had looked at too was the utilities. I do happen to be one who likes to promote, as long as it meets health, safety, and welfare standards, something different, something off the grid. But I do understand the considerations, and I do know that in our discussions with Planning Commission over the last several years, we had typically said that they would hook up to all the utilities. And I know, I think somebody at the podium had mentioned composting toilets, and I know that that's kind of been part of the discussion. But I think what needs to be clarified, if, if we do want to have the off-grid clause, what does that mean? Define it. And/or that we require that they have regular utility hookups. I'm, I'm pretty much open to either one, I just think there needs to be clarification. And then as far as the, the stay period, and I thought about this too while I've been studying all of this, the issue about, is it, it's mobile, is it transient, are they just going to, you know, somebody moving in and out every year? We may want to consider that that stay period increases. The other thing to consider too with that is, if somebody's going to move the house onto a property, it's going to take some logistics, it's going to take time and money, and if, if you're going to get all set up and you're going to put a deck and you're going to skirt and landscape and what have you, it's not going to be that economical to want to move in a year. So in a way, the design almost, not pushes, I don't, that's not the right word, but actually, I would think would, somebody would want to stay longer. So the consideration is that and/or consider increasing the stay period. You know, maybe it's two years, maybe it's three, maybe it's five years. And then the other thing is, I really, if I pared this whole thing down and I said, what, what's the big difference? Based on all the guidelines and we meet the safety issues, it's really the foundation. It boils down to, it's not on a foundation, it's on a frame, it gets screened, and it costs less because it doesn't have the foundation. And I think that's kind of the crux of it, because we're saying it has to meet safety standards, it has to meet all the ADU setbacks and everything else. So I'm in favor because I do, I feel like it's another option for an ADU.
Now, I can tie on that, because that's exactly my point, is that there's, there's one photograph that Dan Fitzpatrick presented, and it was one with a tiny home in a backyard with the wheels and the one without the wheels. And they're essentially the same thing. So if you took any one of these pictures here, that, that tiny home at Boku that you may liked or not liked, if it didn't have wheels, it would be able to be put in someone's backyard without any review from this committee, period. Okay? You have to understand that. We don't, we wouldn't have that review. That's going to be in there. So we are essentially talking about wheels and a frame. That's what we're talking about. We have design criteria here that's spelled out in this initiative is, it's vague, but it's specific. It's specific in the sense that we are going to be architecturally distinct from traditional mobile homes and recreational vehicles. So if you look at most tiny homes, they are different. That's why they have a different definition. That's why we're, we're struggling to define them differently. But that is the nature of them. So because they're conventionally built, we're talking about really the foundation. Addressing, there is an ANSI code, by the way, for the lofts and for accessibility and egress from lofts for fire codes. So that's already in there, so we can apply that. Now, as far as other, as far as this ordinance goes, I think it's perfect the way it is. I think it's perfect in its simplicity. I think it empowers people to take their housing into their own hands. It's a move in that direction, and it's also a move to reduce the impediments that are just great, you know, to build. I'm a builder here. I can't even afford to do, I can't afford to hire myself. I'm serious. It is expensive here, and I don't know how people do it. And so there's some of the things here that I think are important to modify in this ordinance. One is, I'm in agreement with Kathy about the, the twelve-month period. I personally don't want people coming and going in a tiny home. I also know that it's, it's, it takes great effort to set a tiny home. You may think you just wheel it in and you plug it in. If you're going to permanently hook up the utilities, there is a lot of infrastructure that has to be put in. There is a lot of preparation. Ask anybody who has a tiny home if they ever want to move it again. They don't. They'd never want to move it again. So that, and that's a fact. So the, the idea that we can put them easily in, we can, we, we can encourage decks and other things around them, they will essentially look like any other ADU or structure that, that was conventionally built. So with that said, that's, that item, as far as the extended period, I would like to see that to be at least two years. I would even be in favor of three to four years in a permit cycle, because I, I don't want to see them move, and I don't think tiny home people want to move them. So I don't think they would object to that. The other thing is, I'm in agreement with the ANSI code being the main code that governs this versus any of the UBC or IRC codes. The minimum size, or the minimum size, that 440 square feet seems very large. I think we need to do some work on that. We need to kind of look at what that looks like, and we may, may need to adjust that. And I'm thinking, adjust it down, not up. Let's see, what else? So essentially, that's, that's, that's my feedback on tiny homes. I, I personally think we should move forward with this initiative with those changes.
Okay. And...
Chair, before you add your comments...
Yes, sir.
Just one point of perhaps clarification for the commission and the public. With respect to taxation, property taxation, that is, the director spoke with the county assessor's office previously, and while nothing is filed until the property tax bill is delivered and paid, the county's position is that if a tiny house has the wheels removed and is permanently affixed to the land, then it is subject to property tax. If the, and thus would trigger reassessment of that portion of the land, of... If the, and thus would trigger reassessment of that portion of the land of a single-family house. Wouldn't trigger reassessment of the full house, the rest of it, bearing Prop 13 in mind. And if the tiny house on wheels, has the wheels kept in place and is not permanently fixed to the land, then it would not be subject to property tax. The caveat, of course, is that until the bill is received, it is up to the county to enforce its own law.
Okay. Appreciate that clarification. My concern at this point is, as I look at the audience here with this issue as with so many others that we have come across in the last five or 10 years here in the city, there's a great deal of passion here in the city. There are a great deal of good questions asked and answered as we go here. My, I hate to characterize it that way, but my unsuccessful run for city council four years ago had as one of its planks that if we're going to have rules in this city, they must be clear, they must be in writing, and they must be understandable to the average citizen who comes to the city looking for some sort of transaction. If I were trying, if I had it in my head to put a tiny home, on wheels or not at this point, though we're only talking about on wheels, in my yard, if I looked at this ordinance, I would not know what I'm allowed to do and what I'm not allowed to do. And that's no slam on, on city staff because as everyone has said, this is an extremely complex issue. The standards are not understandable by the, by the average person. If we had some sort of a checklist to go through, to talk about what kinds of things are allowed in tiny homes, what kinds of things are not allowed in tiny homes, I think that could go a long way toward informing the public so that people could make an educated choice about whether to start a permitting process. I think there's been a lot of good said here about RV parks. And as I look at it, I don't see a space in the city that would accommodate an RV park. Whether it's big RVs, little RVs, none of them are allowed right now. Except if it's a hotel-type situation like, like Mr. Hilgers. But there are areas just outside the city limits, in the city's sphere of influence, where I see a lot of space that, that could accommodate tiny home villages or however we might want to characterize those things. And I don't see the same opportunities inside the city. So while I, I like that idea better because it's people of a similar mindset, living in a, in a close proximity to each other, I think that having movable tiny homes scattered throughout our residential neighborhoods at this point seems to me to be counterproductive to the city's culture. If we have tiny homes not on wheels that are permanently affixed, it's an ADU. We already have regulations for ADUs and we know what they are. I, I don't have a basis right now for saying are tiny homes put onto a permanent foundation that are built to ANSI standards, are they safer or less safe than tiny homes on that same foundation built to the, to the California business or Building Standards Code? I don't know. And my fear is that nobody in the city right now has a good understanding of that. And so it seems to me that is, it is an area of risk. There must be, in my mind, some reason that the city has said no RVs in the city. And that's been the rule for a long time. And I don't think it's because they have sheet metal on the outside. I don't know what the reason is. If that is the sole reason, then one could put shingles on the outside of an RV, but it's not allowed. And so I would, I would wonder if someone could inform us as to why that rule is there. Is it simply because we don't like sheet metal siding? I have a neighbor that has a sheet metal roof and that apparently is legal. So I'm not sure what the rules are there for. I'm wondering if someone moves a tiny home on wheels into a backyard. I noticed in the ordinance, it says the tiny home on wheels must carry the same street address as the primary struck, as the primary residence. I'm not sure why that is, but I'm wondering now, what happens to the voter rolls? Do people that move in here for a year get to vote in Ojai and then pick up the trailer and leave? And then they're voting somewhere else? I mean, you can do that by renting a residential dwelling and then moving out of town and renting somewhere else. And so, yes, Mr. ...
Let me clarify that point for the public, because that's a particular, that touches on a few other issues. Any person who is a US citizen over 18 hasn't lost their voting rights due to being currently incarcerated or on probation or parole, may vote in any election where they are domiciled. They may register to vote and then they can vote. There's, every election has a registration deadline. Most elections, it's the day of the election or shortly before, maybe shortly before. And it doesn't matter whether you've been transient or have moved in recently, as long as you live in the jurisdiction at the registration deadline for that election, which varies by election and you are eligible to vote, 18 US citizens, et cetera, then you may vote. So a tiny house dweller could vote in the city as long as they lived in the city at the right time. The right time being the time before that election.
Okay, okay, I understand that. It seems to me that the voter rolls question may be of the same nature as the RENA numbers question. And to my way of thinking, right now, one of these pieces of paper that we received from, from a citizen quoted the current housing element that said there are 700-odd spaces where, where affordable housing could be built in the city or could be put in the city. I don't want to say built because it might be towed. The actual RENA number, as I understand it right now, in the, in more recent city council deliberations and as reported within the last month or so in the Ventura paper, says our RENA number is 371. Quite a stretch either way you go. But I would pose a hypothetical. If we wanted to meet our RENA numbers, could we bring, let's say, 300 tiny homes on wheels into the, into the city, meet our RENA numbers, and then take them out and let someone else meet their RENA numbers with those, with those three, with those, I'm, I'm serious about this, with those same 300 movable tiny homes. And if, if that is legal, is it right? We've already covered taxes. And by the way, I'm, I am not against tiny homes per se. If you want to live in something small or you want to live in something big, my philosophy has generally been, do whatever you want with your own stuff as long as it doesn't bother the neighbors. And if it bothers the neighbors, talk to the neighbors and try to work it out. Okay, but where, where are we with that? I recognize ADUs are by right at this point in virtually every area of the city. But movable tiny home ADUs are not. And I think it must be because there is a categorical difference there in the eyes of the city council. And so I think we need to explore that point some more. We talked about affordable by design and I would say that a tiny home is affordable to build by design. It is not necessarily affordable to live in by design. And so I'm not sure how much we're contributing to the, to the housing stock for people at the low and very low, even moderate income levels by, by bringing in a bunch of tiny homes on wheels. Once again, if it's a permanent part of our, of our city, then I, I say it's just another kind of ADU and that's fine. Whether I like ADUs or not, that's the rule right now and we'll enforce that rule. You can only make things affordable, as I see it, by rent control. And I think that is not a road that the city wants to go down at this point. I had one other point, but I've missed it. And so my conclusion at this point is, and I, I thank everyone who's been here tonight, not only your passion, but your insights into this topic for and against have been of great value to this commission, as have the discussions among the commissioners. My personal feeling is that we are not at a point where we have a document that we can either say, no, this is bad, or say to the city council, pass it the way it is or pass it with some enumerated amendments. Because I think we have too many open questions at this point. And so I would not vote to say, do away with it entirely because I'm not yet convinced that we can't find a way to make tiny homes a part of the community. Tiny homes on wheels, I have some real reservations about because they are inherently transient. But I don't think we're at a point where we can say, in any, in any form that we can look at right now, that we should vote to recommend that the city council take something on. And I would personally prefer to continue this item, whether it's to a date certain or to a date uncertain, I think the latter is much more likely at this point, until we have more logical infrastructure, let's call it that. Whether it's guidelines or clarifications of the rules that we've seen or clarity in the rules that we've seen, I think, I think we need to wait until we have a more comprehensive package that we can say yes or no to. So that's, that's my thoughts on the matter. Ray?
The last thing I would like to see is another contentious and polarized subject that our little community goes to. It seems like there has been a domino for the last three years of so many subjects that have really caused division. So I always look for this and that, not a this or that. I think one of the reasons the ADU ordinance didn't have tiny homes is because it wasn't on the radar. I mean, the conversation started three years ago, but that, it was a miniscule conversation. One of our speakers spoke about evolving. And I think in, you know, anything that doesn't evolve dies off. It's nature. So the thing is, how much do we resist the evolution in lifestyle, the evolution of a community? And embrace something new, yet have it work? I do disagree that tiny homes on wheels are inherently transient. I tend to be more in the camp of what Commissioner Jagiello said, was it takes a lot of effort to move a tiny home. Once you put it on the foundation, hook it up to utilities, put the skirt on. Most people I know that have them, I agree, they don't want to move them. They're, I, I don't see them as inherently transient. I would be open to extending the 12-month period to a longer period because I think that would occur anyway. Yet I think there needs to be an out. Because one of the beauties of having a home, you know, skirted albeit, but on a trailer, is if I get hired somewhere and I need to move to another city, county, state, I can take my home with me. And I don't have to sell my home. I, I don't have to go find another home, I have my home that goes with me.
I just want to comment on that, can I comment on that? Because I think you can have a little bit of both. You can extend the period to say two to four years, but you can move it out anytime. You just can't get another permit to move another one in before that timeframe. That's the difference to me. So if you have, your permit is two or three years long, you move it out in a year, well, you're not moving anything back in there for the third year. You know, your permit has a date on it.
Okay, got it.
You cannot, so that's how I see we can solve that problem. So go ahead, I'm sorry, but I wanted to...
But you continue to contend that the tiny home on wheels is not inherently transient?
I think it has the ability to be mobile. I don't think it inherently attracts a transient type of person. I think transience comes with behavior and personality and, and not because of the home they're living in.
If I could just have one clarification on the time period. Essentially, I think of like, that's really running with the land on which a tiny home would be located, not if somebody owned a tiny home but not the land and wanted to move. They could move that home off anytime, we couldn't, there's no mechanism to force them to retain it there. The goal is to not have somebody who owns a property where they would keep potentially changing a unit in and out. So it's really something that's tied to that address.
And to extend that example for a moment, if you had land owned by a landlord who had rented the space to a tiny home dweller who had brought the tiny home on wheels that they owned onto the property, skirted it, didn't permanently affix it, then the tiny home dweller wished to move it, the city cannot prohibit that tiny home owner from moving the tiny home off the land. However, the city can and this ordinance does prohibit the landlord from allowing anyone else to put a new tiny home back on that land for the stay period. Here, it's 12 months, it could be extended.
Okay, the, the, I, I now remember the last question that I had. And that is that this, this movable tiny home is different from other ADUs in one other case. And that is that the owner of the parcel and the primary residence does not have to be the same as the owner of the tiny home on wheels, whether you take the wheels off temporarily or not, that's in the backyard. And, and I think that is an inherently more transient kind of environment. Because it says you either have to be the owner of the parcel or you have to show that the owner of the parcel says it's okay for you to put your tiny home on wheels in the owner's backyard. And again, if, if we're trying to establish a, a stable community, then I think the best way to do it is with stable housing. And I don't think a tiny home on wheels is stable housing. Yes, ma'am?
Well, it seems to me if you move your tiny home into my backyard and then you decided to move it, it might actually be more cost-effective for you to sell it and get a new one. I mean, maybe the owner of the land has to own the tiny, the tiny home as well and that, then you wouldn't have to figure out how long somebody has to live there. I mean, if I were the property owner and, and I said, okay, you could move in there and then you moved out and I couldn't have somebody else in there, I probably would be more inclined to say, I'm just going to buy the tiny home myself.
If you're willing to sell it to me?
No, I'm saying I would buy it to begin with.
Oh, buy your own tiny home and put it on your lawn.
I think that the reason the tiny home movement has gained traction is not the movability, it's the price. It's the idea that it's the price and if it has wheels, you don't have to pay property tax and it skirts the building permitting issue. This is what I said in the very beginning when we talked about this. This is a cry to, that's saying, our building process is sick and this is what we are proposing to get around that because nobody can seem to fix it. And yes, California has a housing crisis. They created the housing crisis and they keep making the process more and more complicated. In over 20 years of building in Massachusetts, I knew no one who built any project of any size without a permit, but it wasn't the process that it is here. Here, people build without a permit because we force them to do that. Our building process is broken and that's what this tiny home movement is about. I'm not inherently against that, what, I mean, the tiny home, the idea of it. What I don't want to do is say, okay, well, we'll just do that and forget about the fact that our building process is broken in the whole state and... And I think that as a small community, we could have done better than we have done, and we need to look at our building process and make it more user-friendly in every possible way. So I think that's another issue at bay here.
Okay, yes, Jessica.
And I have to concur wholeheartedly that that's exactly what I love about this ordinance, the simplicity of it. That's what I love. It's the reducing of impediments, you know, that is the barrier to doing. How many ADUs have we issued permits on? I don't know recently, but the last time I checked was, there's probably more now, right, since we passed the ordinance. But prior to that, you know, there weren't many. There were seven in three years or something like that. There wasn't a lot. So why? Because of the cost.
Seventeen thousand dollar fee.
Yes.
I can't disagree with you on that, but the topic tonight is not the building permit process.
Well, but it's, okay, but everybody's talking about other things that are related, right?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, we're not, because I'm the one who's probably zeroed in on the ordinance more than anyone. And the fact of the matter is that it reduces, that's the whole point of the affordable by design, is the simplicity of being able to go downtown to the county, to the city, and get a permit to move a tiny home into a yard, meeting all the setbacks, meeting all the requirements of the ADU. Really, we're talking about the frame and the wheels. That is it. So it comes down to that point.
And I think we're talking about the construction.
Well, but the construction is addressed by saying...
By saying this alternative set of standards, which none of us understands, is okay. And I'm willing to be convinced that ANSI 119-2 and 119-5 will make a dwelling just as safe as the California Building Standards Code.
And I agree with you on that.
I don't know that it's true, but I'm willing to be convinced that it is. But it's still not the same.
Sure, it's not the same, that's why we're here. And that's the point.
And that's the point.
That's the whole point. We don't want it to be the same.
How transient, how transient do we want the housing to be here?
And I'm saying if we put a five-year limit on it, that's not transient to me, okay? We can put that on there. We have the power to do that. So does that answer, does that deal with the transient issue in your mind?
It does in part, yes.
Okay.
Are you satisfied with all the questions that have been asked and all the answers that have been given?
No, I do think we need to have more answers in certain areas. For instance, I do think that we need a, let's say, a chart balancing the ANSI codes with the building codes, so we understand, we at least understand what those are and the safety issues, with the focus on safety.
Yeah.
Okay? So that, I think, is an assignment we can ask for and look at to make sure we're moving something forward that is safe.
Okay.
Okay? That I agree with.
Okay. And in terms of the clarity for the average citizen, I would like to see something that says, "What is adequate and acceptable in the eyes of the city," that is, the director and the CBO, "in terms of all the utility hookups?"
Exactly. And I think that is totally legitimate.
I don't think it's been spelled out here.
Totally legitimate.
So I think that's additional work that should be done before we reach a conclusion on what to send forward.
Absolutely. And I think we're on the right track right now. And that was what I was going to recommend as well, is a continuance on this item, but get specific on a date and also on what it is that we want. And I think we just started that list just now. You, you know, we talked about the, well, we can, let's try to identify it, because I do believe that's where I'd like to move this whole discussion into another meeting that's designed to answer those specific questions, so that we can move it forward to the next level. And I think we can identify those now. We have enough discussion here to do that. One is the ANSI code versus the building code.
Yes.
Just have a matrix there so we can at least understand with a focus on safety. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. We can, we looked, we're looking at utilities.
That's a public health issue as well as a safety issue.
Utility hookups. I think that's an easy one to solve, if they can give us more clarity on what the utilities, what that looks like and how that's defined.
What's acceptable.
Exactly.
Yes.
And I think we can hash that out. I think we should look at the amount of time that, in the stay period. I think 12 months is way too short. I'm in favor of three to five years. I think we should, we should look at that item.
It's a worthwhile topic.
Mm-hmm. Other than that, those, to me, are the main, the main issues.
Right. And I know we just heard about the property tax, and basically, this is kind of input from the public, you know, concern about, I don't know if fair is the right word, but is that something we want to look at? I mean, could a permit fee, are you saying no? I mean, I heard you earlier...
Not to speak by nod, but the rule on permitting fees under Proposition 26 is the city cannot charge more than the reasonable cost to providing that service. So for those tiny houses on wheels that are not subject to property tax, the city cannot use a permit fee to make up that lost revenue to the general fund, unfortunately. That ship has been preempted by this, actually, that one was by the voters.
Could you call it a bed tax of some magnitude?
A bed tax?
Yeah.
Bed taxes can only be imposed on occupancies of less than 30 days. The city's prohibited occupancies of less than 30 days.
Can we make up, can we make up a new term for it?
Unfortunately, that has also been preempted. I support the creativity, but the Howard Jarvis Tax Association that writes these anti-tax initiatives has also thought through that and blocked that.
So what if a tiny homeowner rolls the tiny home, sets it up on property, and could it be built into whatever lease fee there is for that piece of land they're parking their tiny home on, that some would go to the city? So if I own a tiny home...
People can donate all they wish, but the city can't force them to pay that money.
Right.
The reality of it is, and I, not to be harsh, but the reality of it is that the city can only raise general revenue in only one way, voter-approved taxes. Any other revenue into the city has to be tied to a specific privilege granted, permit or benefit granted, such as utility services.
Transaction cost, whatever, yeah.
Or service or use provided. For example, if the city acts as a market participant and leases real estate, we can charge a market rate for leasing real estate.
I'm just trying to think of a workaround for the, you know, to make it equanimous.
It doesn't exist.
I hate to, I just want to jump in on one thing. I haven't been in Ojai long, but planning commissions are really supposed to focus on land use policy. And this is an ordinance. I think all of these are completely fair topics, but they're kind of getting off the land use regulatory aspect of allowing these units in residential neighborhoods and possibly other zoning districts where residence exists. There probably are going to be fairness issues related to taxation assessment. I don't think they're solvable.
I don't think the planning commission can regulate a lot of those things. What I'm, my contention would be that the answers to these widespread questions have an effect on whether or not the planning commission thinks that land use is going to turn out to be appropriate to recommend to the city council.
And that's why we wanted to...
Not that we plan to regulate any of it, just to get answers to the question.
Right. And that's why I think it was important to get that answer about, how is the county assessor going to look at these? And I think the answer is really, is this thing on a foundation, therefore, we consider it permanent? If it's not, it's not permanent, you're not getting reassessed on that portion.
As a follow-up to that very topic, if a tiny home on wheels, which at the moment that it arrives in a, on a parcel, is a trailer, it's regulated by the DMV, it has a license plate on it that expires at a certain time, et cetera. If it's placed on a permanent foundation, does that mean that it is no longer a trailer? That it is no longer regulated by the DMV? That it no longer requires annual re-registration with the DMV? I, I'm asking the question because I don't know the answer. I don't think anyone here knows the answer.
Well, I, well, yes, I mean, if it's, it's either ANSI, if it's ANSI-created, like, if it's an ANSI code that creates the structure, like an RV, you can't make that into a California Building Code model.
Right. So even if it's on a permanent foundation, it remains a trailer, and it requires a license plate, and it requires annual re-registration.
That's what I believe at this time with this information that I have.
That's your answer to it.
And I think the ANSI standards are going to be guiding in most cases, because these are...
With respect to the DMV question as well, it would be, we haven't looked at that in conversation with the DMV, whether or not a tiny house, tiny home on wheel owner maintains their DMV registration is a matter for the DMV and that owner, not the city.
Can we ask, can we ask a tiny homeowner that's in the room for their take on it?
The commission may reopen the public hearing if desired.
We're talking, you know, theoretically, and there's some real-world examples in our presence.
Oh, I guess if we're going to do this, we need to reopen the public hearing, yes.
So my name is Vina Lustado. I'd like to chime in on that question. When a structure is on wheels, it's governed by ANSI standards as an RV. If you take off the wheels from the chassis, then it's, it could be considered a manufactured home, where it's a tie-down construction, similar to mobile homes where you take off the wheels and then you have a tie-down detail to the ground so that it's permanently fixed, but not like a typical foundation, like a concrete foundation or raised with floor, then it is subject to a manufactured home foundation, which is different from ANSI.
I think maybe it would be firmly fixed, but not necessarily permanently fixed.
Correct. It's semi-permanent, so to speak.
But that gets back to, are we adding to the wealth of the, to the assets of the community by this land use?
One of the things that is at issue here is the difference between permanently fixed is defined by the county assessor, permanently affixed is defined by ANSI standards, the difference between semi-permanently and permanently, we have the same word being used in five or six different contexts. The county's position, the county assessor's position, is if you take the wheels off and it sits, whether it's a tie-down or permanent or semi-permanent, all of those, it will trigger reassessment for those. That definition and that purpose is different than the other standards. And of course, this is designed to require either skirting of the wheels and leveling on support jacks, or else a foundation requirement that follows a state-approved foundation systems for manufactured housing. The former, the latter, rather, would trigger, under the county's current statement, at least at this preliminary stage, would trigger that higher property tax level.
Okay. And removal of the tiny home on wheels from the property would likewise also trigger a reassessment then?
It creates opportunity for the property owner to ask the county to adjust their assessment. Notably, the county never automatically assesses down. They often automatically assess up.
But they will if you ask them.
Okay.
May I ask a question? So if it's, if it's considered a manufactured home foundation, is that assessed property taxes? I'm not sure how that works.
The position we've heard from the county assessor is that, through the chair, yes, that would be assessed property taxes.
So that's, that's the answer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Am I right in taking it that if you...
I'm sorry, I know, I think you were here before, but...
Anita Hendricks. If you're taking this time period, you're saying it would be a year, and you would be increasing it to two, three, four, or five years. To me, what that would do was, and I could be wrong, but correct me if I'm wrong, that would discourage, I would think, people from having tiny homes on their property, or people who have a tiny home, putting their house on their property. And it would also, I think, encourage, what it would encourage would be land owners having permanent tiny homes on their property, as opposed to some of the people who are, now have tiny homes, they may not have a place to put their tiny homes. So it would be a disadvantage to them, because they would have the home, but it's a five-year wait. It seems to me it would encourage homeownership of land and tiny homes over a private individual having their home and finding a place to put it. So can you comment on that, please?
My understanding from, from the city attorney is that the length of the cycle that we're discussing here is the period, the period no shorter than which the parcel owner can register another tiny home. It is not directly related to who owns the tiny home.
Well, if you have a parcel owner, I rent a house, I rent a trailer, or a trailer, what do you want to call it, the tiny home, to someone, and if...
Is it yours?
Say, I don't, say I don't own it, okay? But I rent it to somebody else, a space for somebody else to put their tiny home on, and they move after a year or two, and I have to wait five more years.
Whatever the length of time is, it's from the beginning of the registration.
Or one more year, or two more years. The longer that period is of waiting, the more likely, as a homeowner, I think, would be to buy a tiny home and have it on the property, increase the odds of that over them having the land and allowing someone else who needs a place to put their tiny home to put it on the property, because that's such a long interval to wait.
That seems, that seems very logical to me, yes.
And I think that's a disadvantage to the people I know who have tiny homes and don't have a place to put it. So please consider that. These are people who have modest means usually. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Real quick, Steve? I believe the lady was called on first, Mr. Hilgers.
Sorry?
I believe the lady was called on first.
You're next up.
Sorry, real quick. So it's a bit confusing to me, just listening to this conversation. If I owned a piece of property, which I do in the city, and somebody came onto my property with a permit, and they owned their tiny home, and they left, they signed up for a five-year term or something, and they left in 30 days, would that preclude me from bringing another one onto my property?
Yeah, I think the homeowner has to get the permit, not the person with the tiny home.
This is worded, again, as presently drafted, meaning it can be changed, this is worded to impose a prohibition that's tied to the land, not to the ownership structure. So if, Alice and Bob, if Alice owns the land and leases space to Bob to put a tiny house on wheels on the property, then that term would, that would be of, one-year, five-year, two-year term as set by the council. If Bob removes the tiny home that he owns early, then that prohibition still remains for the period of time, because it's tied to the land.
So as the property owner...
As presently drafted.
I would be prohibited from bringing another one on for another four and a half years or something?
That is correct, which is why we would expect sensible property owners to bargain for the right that's being given up when they leased, initially leased to a property owner.
Or be very careful about which person you choose to bring onto your land. That's...
Yeah. But I think that the draft ordinance says you have to either show that you are the owner of the tiny home, or if you're not the, or that the owner of the parcel has given you the owner of the tiny home permission to park there.
That is correct.
That says to me, the owner of the tiny home, whether it's the owner of the parcel or some other party, is the one that gets the permit.
That is correct. This is structured to impose the permit requirement on the applicant, the owner of the tiny house. If they are not the property owner, they have to provide that proof. And that's the same as any other land use permit.
Right. But it also then puts a restriction on the owner of the parcel, even if it's the, a different party, owner of the tiny home, that acquired the permit.
That is correct, which means, of course, owners of land should be conscious and thoughtful in allowing the others to apply for permits on the land that they leased.
Very good.
Which is the same as any other situation. Right now, the land use code requires a tenant who has leased commercial space to have proof of right to occupancy before they can be, receive a CUP.
Could the person who has the tiny home who's subletting the land from the property owner, could they sublet their tiny home to somebody else?
Again, we're getting way off of land use. I'm just, like, some of these questions are, they may be good questions, they have nothing to do with land use regulation.
Okay. Well, the other thing is, I'm starting a new business, I'm doing magnetic shingles for RVs, so you can make it a tiny home.
Thank you very much.
As far as land use goes, there is the environmental concern. The people who already are living in their tiny houses, are they plumbed? The people who already are living in their tiny houses, are they plumbed to the sewer? Are they hooked up to a septic tank or are they utilizing a pit toilet or a compost toilet?
I would say since we don't know where they are, we can't answer that question.
Okay, so therefore they could be affecting our groundwater. I'm studying environmental compliance. I've got COA in water and wastewater. The sciences have always been a keen interest of mine. And there is going to be a huge environmental impact in this small valley despite the fact that people want to say there won't be. We do have a limited amount of air as far as inversion layer goes. There are plenty of things that will impact that. And there's the concern with the property owner. Now they've got a tenant who's not paying rent. They're making a mess. It's hard enough to evict someone out of a room. Now you've got someone with their house on your land. How do you evict that person when you need to? How complicated is that going to be? They're hooked to the sewer. Who's going to pay for that? These are things that actually do matter for land use because the coming and going of that vehicle affects not only the property owner, but the neighbors as well. They've got to take this big thing in and bring it in on a trailer and stick it in there. And although there's scoffing going on by someone who's probably living illegally, it really needs to be looked at. The legality of it, the environmental impact of it, how it affects the neighbors. How difficult is it to come and go and move? Is this going to take a wide load permit? All these things matter and it is part of land use because it affects the others around it. So it does apply.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. One last, one last comment and then we're going to take some action here and go home.
So as I'm sitting here listening, Kathy Richards again, listening to this, it's occurring to me that if I had one of these things next to my house, I would hope that it was insured because if it caught on fire and caught my house on fire, I would want to be able to have some recourse. So who's responsible for that? It's a vehicle. Is it required to be licensed like a car has to be licensed? Is it covered under the homeowner's policy of the primary structure? What, what liability protection for the neighbors is, is built into this situation? And shouldn't some comment about that be in this ordinance?
Okay. Thank you. Maybe that's, not, not to answer at the moment, but maybe the city attorney can enlighten us over a period of time as we.
We're happy to look at insurance issues, the same as any other issue.
I'm sorry?
We're happy to look at insurance issues. Notably, there's no requirement for insurance presently on any property.
On any property, that's what I thought.
Anybody who's sensible gets insurance. We always recommend it, but there's, it's not required.
Right, okay.
But for vehicles, it is.
The commenter pointed out.
It is for autos.
Automobiles are required.
I'm not sure that it is for trailers.
Not for things that don't have an internal combustion engine.
Well, the, the question becomes is, is a tiny home insurable and then what type of insurance?
One of the questions to consider.
Yeah. I think we, we would.
I'd like to say if I had one, I'd never take the wheels off it. I mean, it's an obvious thing, isn't it? If you've got it on your property and then you're going to get assessed, well, you'd put the skirt on, but leave the wheels on for the rest. I mean, who would take them off? Nobody.
Okay.
The chair may wish to close the public hearing.
Thank you all. Yes, I think it's, I think it's quite time to close the public hearing. Any more comments from the commissioners or can we have a motion?
Well, I do want to address land use for a moment because Mr. Becker brought it up that he, you know, that he has a home in the city and he feel, you know, he, he shared that. He didn't feel the lot was an appropriate lot to have a tiny home on, which would be his choice. But I'm wondering if in terms of, of tiny homes, if another type of, I don't know if it would be lot coverage or, you know, like, like Vina mentioned, there's, there's parcels on drown that are much deeper and bigger. Tiny home would fit better. Can we limit, you know, where in the city they would be parked?
I believe our ADU ordinance addresses that totally. It gives us, all these homes would have to meet the setbacks. They would meet the lot coverage. And they, just like any other ADU. And there are many areas that they, like my whole neighborhood, you couldn't put one in because the lots are just too small. And they wouldn't meet all those parameters. So the idea that everybody's, you know, going to just go and put a tiny home in their backyard is probably not going to happen. And not even close. But that's, that in itself will regulate what you can do. And that's what we spent all that time doing so that way those setbacks, those lot coverages are, and the percentage of the main structure, the 50% of the main structure, it all is designed to scale the ADU to fit in that particular spot.
I think, I think you're, you're bringing up the topic of lot coverage though is particularly apropos here because I believe it's at the next meeting. We're going to actually talk about lot coverage parameters for zones that do not currently have specified standards. And I would recommend that everyone here go back into 10-2 and read that section that deals with lot coverage before we have the next meeting. But we do have some odd-shaped lots in this, in this city where my opinion is you could put several houses on a lot. You'd get nowhere near the lot coverage that's specified for that zone. And yet they'd, things would be spaced out far enough that they wouldn't bother each other or the neighbors, at least arguably. So let's pay, let's take that up at the next meeting. And right now, let's see if we have a motion on this proposed ordinance. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make, to make a motion that we continue this item with more input on the questions that were raised from staff.
And I'd like to identify those questions. Have Luke read them to us and add to that list if we could. And to a date certain, I believe.
Okay, and I, I, again, on this topic, as, as on the Waterwise standards, I want to compliment the director. He took our disjointed conversations on that topic, which were arguably no more disjoint than tonight's discussions, and made it sound like we knew what we were talking about when he came back to the term sheet.
Yeah.
And that, that we did feel good about passing on to the city council, so.
Okay, if you'd want, I'll take a shot because while there's been a lot talked about, I think there's three definite things I had for where we need to come back as staff with more information for you. Those are really the duration. We've got 12 months specified in here now. I've heard, sounds like there's support to increase that anywhere from say two to five years, but to increase that over the 12-month period of time. The safety issue in terms of balancing ANSI standards with conventional building standards, getting an assurance, since it appears ANSI standards will more often be the guiding one, that it's comparable, at least to what you'd have for a building.
Are the public safety aspects of the two standards comparable?
Correct, correct. So that we can look into as well. And also the adequacy of how we're going to determine utility hookups was another issue. Because right now, that's very open-ended. So those were the three I got that there was definitely more information that you need from us.
And one I'd like to add to that, that we, we remove that section K on page attachment A, page five of seven where it refers to the state building code and we should be all on the ANSI code.
Correct. The subsection K, emergency and rescue openings and remove the California building code reference.
And, and, and make the requirement, rather than by citation, give us some kind of standard that is, that is clear to the members of the commission and by extension to any citizen who comes in looking for a permit. Okay, and. Well, let's go to tab three, future agenda items.
July 18th.
How big is the conversation on June 20th for design guidelines and parking? Is that a, is that something that's going to take up all evening?
It could be a long discussion. It's, it's actually two topics. The, the, the first is an assignment to us from the city council to look at developing design guidelines for areas of the city that do not, are not currently covered by design guidelines. We have Arcade Design Guidelines, we have East End, and we have Arcade Plaza. But as we found in considering one case on Ojai Avenue that's across the street from the arcade, there are no design guidelines there. It's not clear to me at this point.
Mr. Quilsey, what about June 6?
How much, how much we do need to cover?
What about June 6th, since we're talking about lot coverage? It's very, you know, connected, that subject.
Lot coverage and density is.
It's very connected to the subject.
It's very connected to this, yes, I agree.
Staff would like more time than between now and June 6th to evaluate the many issues that have been raised.
I would, I would have thought so.
July 18th?
Sorry?
It would either be that or this bumps, foresee it bumps something else at an earlier date and pushes it either like the design guidelines. That would maybe be a better option.
Do you feel comfortable coming back by June 20th? On this topic?
It'll be tight, but it's probably doable. There's, you know, probably I see July 4th is canceled and July 10th. I don't know if that would be a regular meeting or if we're having the joint meeting. July 10th would be a much.
This is a typical one hour before the city council.
Right, I understand. So yeah, otherwise if we don't make June 20th, it looks like we have a big gap. We essentially have a one-month gap.
If we miss June 20th, we have another four weeks.
Yeah.
I would prefer to go June 20th because it's, it's up. It's up for discussion now and if we push it off, it just, it gets less clear on where we were before. And we haven't really started the design guidelines in parking, so.
No, we have not.
Right, so we, if we can move that to July 18th, I would recommend that we move this item to July, June 20th.
What's the, what's the sense of the commission? We'll make your motion then to date certain, June 20th.
And we, yes, that we continue the motion with the questions explained until June 20th.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Let's take a vote then.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilsey?
No.
Merk?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Five to one, the motion passes. All right, we have no discussion items tonight. Now we're going to informational items, future agenda items. We just penciled in tiny homes on wheels for June 20th and we're moving design guides, guidelines and parking to July 18th. Could you tell us a little bit about what you expect we'll be doing on June 6th, Director?
I need to look into it a little bit more, but it, it seems like a fairly straightforward issue with the coverage. I believe it's three zoning districts.
Yeah, there, there are two or three.
And they're the larger.
Please, let's, can we, can we keep down the conversation?
Take it outside.
We're still in session, thank you.
No, thank you. Yeah, the, the largest lot, the three largest lot zoning districts for single-family use don't have any coverage standards unlike the other zoning districts. So I'm not sure what triggered, other than the absence of the standards, if there was some other.
There's some holes in one of the tables in the code.
Right, and, and that, that is clear, but I know sometimes, you know, from experience elsewhere, that could be triggered by things like large new homes coming in, taking advantage of coverage. So if that's not the issue, I think then the issue really is you're lacking standards. Do you want coverage standards for such large lots? You don't necessarily have to have them. I mean, coverage is not required.
That's certainly something that we could recommend as we leave those tables alone. Do you feel, I'm, I'm amenable to the argument that at the same time that we're talking about lot coverage, it seems logical to talk about the number of residential units on a parcel in a zone.
It's a, it's a different.
It has a direct effect obviously on lot coverage, but it, but it is a distinct topic.
Right, I would say though, since the, the three zoning districts are all single-family zoning districts, we're essentially looking at a primary residence and a secondary residence. You could have non-habitable buildings that could factor into coverage as well, so.
They're single, they're single-family residences, but they can all have ADUs, so they could at least be dual family residences.
Correct, but really, I mean, that's applying throughout the city really in those zoning districts. So I mean, I think that's a different discussion, you know, and again, I'm not sure what triggered.
I can speak to that, yeah. It was triggered, as you recall, with the new ADU ordinance. This commission raised the issue and the council rightly noted that the lot coverage table is missing a couple, doesn't have lot coverage standards for certain larger, single-family residential zones. And the council directed that that be considered by this commission. The question of upzoning, single-family zones to allow additional density beyond the state mandated one more, one ADU on top of single-family residential is a question that can be had. It's a conversation that can be had. I, I see those as two different questions because the council directed the commission to evaluate lot coverage standards for the, those residential zones that don't have lot coverage standards.
Okay.
I think this commission could ask perhaps in the July 10th special meeting with the council, can ask the council, do you want to, is there support on the council for having a conversation about increasing the number of units allowed on those larger residential parcels, but I don't, that's my suggestion for that.
We have, we have plenty of things to do that the council has asked us to do that we haven't done yet before we just on our own take up new topics that they haven't asked about.
But that does play into additional housing unit.
It could play into additional housing units. And so I think Mr. Summers' suggestion that we ask the city council on July 10th, if they'd like to have us look into that, then they can add that to our job jar.
Can I ask Mr. Summers a quick question?
Please.
Regarding that? So is creating a zoning, and forgive me if I don't have the terminology correct, is creating a zoning overlay different than creating a whole new zone?
They're both zoning, they're both zoning districts typically within overlay. The regulatory requirements of the overlay are in addition to the base zoning. So if you had an R1, single-family zone, and then you had an, say a design overlay district where you specify, if you're in this particular R1 zone and this overlay, your design has to look like a Santa Barbara home or your design can't be two stories. You could specify other things that would be in addition to the base zoning district.
You can make it more restrictive, but not less restrictive. You can't say, if you're in this R1 zone, then you could have six lots or six houses on your lot.
It could be less restrictive. Typically, when you have an overlay though, it's adding a degree of specificity the base zone doesn't have.
It can also exist, of course, as we have with the special housing overlay zone that allows a higher density level for certain, those projects that have affordability above the base density level. And the other thing to bear in mind is that the third, the third distinction there is adding new parcels to an existing overlay zone is a yet different action.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so our, so we have June 6th, June 20th. The, the DRP, I'll be interested to see that, 959 East Ojai Avenue, where's that? Change of use to a hair salon. Is that a former residence like there? I know there's a dentist office down there.
Could be the.
I think the questions on that one should perhaps be reserved for women's.
It's on the south side of Ojai Avenue somewhere.
It's behind, I don't know the name. There's a sushi restaurant that fronts, that's it. It's the small building behind that. It was, looks like it was a former professional office, but it's a small, bluish, green color. It's behind that.
Okay. Okay. So we have pretty much our next three or four meetings outlined here. I'm looking forward to a productive couple of months. Now that we've, we've taken care of moving things out of the way of the motion for continuance to a date certain. It passed, didn't it? Five to one. Excuse me. I've lost it. All right, so we took care of future agenda items. Let's go to tab four, planning commission reports. First one, city council. First one, City Council, May 8th. Commissioner Nolan?
Yes, I did attend, and there was a proclamation that June is officially lavender month in Ojai, something fun. Yeah, and I'm not going to read through every item, but just the ones that kind of stood out. Let me just quickly go through my note here really quick. I'm going to go to the discussion items. There was an item, a proposal for comparative water demand and recharge analysis, and request for seed money to fund in fiscal year 1718. And the motion passed for that, and it was for seed money, about, for $15,000 for Sierra Watershed Progressive. And their initial phase would be to look at low-risk benefits and adding more partners and more players in the community for greater success, and this is for, you know, water attachment. And then later, in a later phase, they'd be looking at grants and matching funds. So, that passed, and then the, there was an introduction of an ordinance requesting use and cultivation of cannabis to permit and regulate cannabis testing laboratories, and that passed. And let me see here for a second.
Was that the subject, was that about recreational use? Sorry?
No.
No, no, it was for regulatory, for lab testing.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
There's going to be a laboratory permitted that serves the dispensaries, basically, to qualify their products.
The other item was increasing compensation for City Council members. And that was, there was a motion to continue that item, but it was basically from their, they've given, a compensation right now is $475 to $780. Let's see what else we had. That was the same thing. I think that's kind of in a nutshell.
Okay. Oh, and that's right, you're doubled up. You got the Building Appeals Board from May 9th.
Two nights in a row, and I also had complete streets. I mean, I felt like I was working for the city, but I wasn't. Okay, so, Building Appeals Board. Let me just go, let's see, I just wrote my notes on their agenda, so, that's why I'm flipping pages here. Basically, they had a discussion item, and it was about the fire hazard map. And two members of BAB had a subcommittee, and basically, they were looking at the zoning and possibly.
Fire hazard severity level zoning.
And we could have mentioned.
City zoning.
Exactly, and we had talked, that kind of came up in our discussion earlier. But basically, they'd be using the CAL FIRE map, and they were trying to determine if there should be some gradations, whereas presently, there are not. Let me see, let me go on to the next one. All right, then, the next item was amendments to the City of Ojai Building Code, including fire resistance construction. And this also had to do with, depending on fire severity, if you're in a higher and moderate zone. And I feel like I'm jumping around here, sorry.
The city building official did a really bang-up job going through Title IX, suggesting modifications.
Right, and basically.
In that area.
Exactly, there was the re-roofing for the Class A roofs. And then the discussion about if 10% or more of a roof was damaged and had to be repaired, would it trigger a Class A roof? And then they also suggested skylights be replaced if they didn't meet the fire criteria.
But none of that has passed yet, or is it?
No, that was all a recommendation to the City Council.
That was a recommendation also, yeah.
Just like we do.
Right, and then there was one more recommendation. This, oh, this was a right-of-appeal change. So, it was chapter two of Title IX. It was kind of a back-and-forth discussion. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm not responding to that really correctly, so I'm going to skip it. And then they said for the next agenda, they were discussing about putting a lot of the fire information into a GIS program, discussion about brush clearance, the water system, meaning the casitas and, of course, the fire hydrants, and getting that into the GIS, and they were going to.
Oh, Geographical Information System.
System, yeah.
Mapping system.
Thanks, Steve, because Steve was there, too. He's backing me up. And then they were going to contact casitas to see if casitas actually had their information in GIS, and could they potentially be using it. And I think that was the gist of it, unless you can think of anything else, Steve, that I missed. I'm not sure what I might have missed adding in those, too.
Oh, yeah, the way the code reads right now, if a permit seeker disputes a decision by the city building official, that is an event that triggers one of the many functions of the Building Appeals Board, and that is the right to hear appeals of decisions by the city building official. The way it's written right now, if you, as a permit seeker, get a decision that you disagree with, then you have 10 days to file an appeal, or you waive right to appeal that decision.
How much is the cost of the appeal? Does anyone know?
I think right now, it's $500.
Okay.
Okay, then the second part of that, and it's in the code right now, the second part of that is, then, the city has 45 days after receiving your appeal to schedule. It wasn't clear to me if it was to schedule and hold the appeal before the BAB, or if it was just to schedule the appeal. But if the city failed to meet that time limit, there's no consequence. And the feeling of the BAB was that that is a very unbalanced system. You could file your appeal within 10 days, and the city could ignore you forever with no consequence. And so, they were trying to get it changed such that it's a little more balanced, as well as the cost of doing an appeal be less than $500. I think, again, state law says the city is not allowed to charge more than the actual cost to the city of performing a service. It's not clear that considering every appeal would be exactly $500 worth of city time. And so, I think something may have to be done there. In any case, I don't know, but that was the topic.
Thank you. Soon as I start listening, and I'm so engrossed, then I realize I didn't write down.
I think that's all of the ones that we have, that are, reports that are due tonight. I would ask of staff, and I'm not sure who puts this schedule together, it may be Sherry, if you would, each time where it says "report at", if you would just list the next occurring Planning Commission meeting, then we would know right away when that's, when a report back. Whichever events you list, list a report-back date.
For everyone, not just for this meeting.
For everyone, for everyone. It's tedious but straightforward to figure out when is the next Planning Commission meeting, and I think that would help focus our attention. Okay? City Council Liaison. Mr. Haney, thank you for your patience, sir.
Just stretch.
I think this has probably been as difficult for you as it has been for us tonight.
Actually, now you know why you don't reopen. But you did one wonderful job tonight. Seems how it was your first as chair. Good job, Steve. And Ray, I was very, very impressed with your homework tonight. Really, you asked some great questions. You really demonstrated that you thoroughly went through your packet. I was really impressed with that. Great questions. Now, one thing, though, is when you started talking about your dragon, for some reason, I had an Oscar Mayer Wiener truck. Came to mine, and I went, now, how do we convert that to a tiny home? But.
Have to take the wheels off.
Personally, this is why we do what we do, and why we have commissions, is exactly what you did tonight. We brought forward a, I don't think it's a contentious item here in the community yet, but there is some discussion about it. And what we're here for is to give the community the opportunity to speak to it. And you did, and you listened, and then you, in turn, asked great questions. And then you, in turn, allowed more follow-up. You know, the community doesn't often get that opportunity. So, again, you engaged them, you engaged yourselves, and I think you came to the appropriate remedy, and that's you need a little more information. You know, there is some clarity that needs to be discovered, and if we're going to move this forward properly, I think that that's the way to do it. So, again, it was long, it was tedious, but you did your job, and that's what we're here for. So, I commend you for that, all of you. I think I had one other thing that I might add to your list if you guys would like to, and that is, how can you make this permitting, if it goes through on tiny homes and on wheels, how can you make it more expeditious? How can we modify it, simplify it, create something that allows this, if it does go through, to be done expeditiously? And I would think that that would be the fourth thing that I would add to your list. How do we achieve that? And maybe through that process, we emulate it in some of the other processes that we do in the community. So, that was the only thing that I thought about. And again, you know, when you're engaging, and I'm sitting back there, you want to be a part, you want to participate, you want to raise your hand, you want to interject yourself. But the reality is, it's going to come back, and it's going to come back to us, and there's going to be another opportunity to have this debate. So, again, I can't, I just can't thank you guys enough for what you did. Oh, I had something else here. I had tiny Raina, tiny rainy, tiny Raina houses on wheels, so that we could figure out how to get those Raina numbers down. I did the Oscar Mayer, you know, I got to keep myself busy back here. I know, I know.
Raina on wheels.
Raina on wheels. Here's, I had one, too, you know, we were talking about how many ADUs have been actually permitted. And I know ADUs are ministerial, if I'm wrong, correct me? Okay, so, that, in turn, does not have any design review associated to them. So, I was kind of curious as to how we were relating design review into tiny homes on will when they're ministerial. So, again, that might be some gray that you might want to look into. I'm just speaking out loud, so, and if it's not gray, great. One other thing is, and I don't have Vina here to answer this, but I'd wonder how many homes, how many tiny homes on wheels have actually been permitted in Fresno since they enacted their ordinance? Because it's the same thing that we talk about with ADUs. Since we enacted this ordinance on ADUs, how many have actually been built? Probably not as many as we had hoped for.
A small number compared to the compliance program, for sure.
Right, so, it would be interesting, so, when we start talking impacts to the community, it's interesting. I don't, you know, and again, I vacillate on this, you guys. I want, you know, I listen to one person talk, and I'm like, yeah, God, I really agree with that. And then someone else talks, and I'm over on this side of it. So, I'm moved, just like you are. But that would be a question that I would want to look at, is if we're going to have, if the term "negative impacts to our community" comes up, I'd like to know what that means and how it is. And I think that's another question that you guys might want to ask yourselves. And when you engage the public, is ask that. Because I think that's a valid concern. And I think all the questions that they're searching for on the four things, the three things that they requested, I'd want to pros and the cons on them. You know, I was at the VCTC, the Ventura County Transportation Commission, on last Friday, and they want to raise the rates on the buses. All the information that I received in the first hour and a half of that meeting, where ridership is down. Two, the people that ride buses, their average income is $35,000 or less. And so, there wasn't, there wasn't any justification as to why. So, I raised my hand and asked why. And the justification was, we hadn't done it in 10 years. That's not justification.
People aren't buying what we're selling, so let's raise the price.
Well, it just wasn't the answer. And then the other thing is, they said, well, let's just pass the request, and then we'll worry about the justification once we've passed it. No, and I, seriously, I see that a lot. And I was, again, extremely proud of the fact. It would have been real easy tonight to say, let's run this through and worry about the consequences down the road. And what you said tonight, let's deal with these consequences that we're hearing about tonight. Let's get them on the front end, so that when we do write this, we do write the best one possible, and that the community can weigh in with all the information, good and bad. And that's what made me the proudest of what took place here tonight, is you didn't push it, you took a step back and said, let's think this through. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much for the kind words, sir. There being no other obvious business before the commission, we're adjourned. Thank you all for attending, and thank you for the patience of all the commissioners and the passion that we have all argued our viewpoints.